I'll call this meeting to order at 7:08 PM. This is a regular meeting of the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, March 24th, 2015. I'd ask everyone to please rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Here.
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 Hudson.
Here.
Sondemar.
Present.
Yes.
You. Also with us Jane McCarthy, our municipal clerk, and Borough Attorney this evening, Dawn Sullivan. This is an official meeting, I'm sorry. Oh, and also, I would introduce him later, our Borough Engineer, Paul Darmofoski. Thank you for being here, Paul. This is an official meeting of the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale on December 12th, 2014. The date, time, and place of this official meeting was faxed and mailed to all local news media and posted here at Borough Hall. We have four presentations this evening, so everyone understands the format. We have, the first item is a public hearing on the sidewalk assessment project that occurred on Rafkin Road. We have a public hearing on an application the Borough is seeking through the county's recreation grant program for drainage work at Walter T. Bergen. We have a presentation by Mr. Ross Kushner of the Paquonic River Coalition, and then a presentation by our Borough Engineer, Paul Darmofoski, in regards to the Tilcon MIR concept that we all are aware of. So with that said, the first order of business is a public hearing and report on the Rafkin Road assessment. We had a very successful project last year. We received DOT money for the repaving of Rafkin Road, and the governing body at that time decided it was the right time to do sidewalks and curbing. And we gave public notice and had a few public meetings with the residents, and it was overwhelmingly supported, so we proceeded. And tonight, by law in the process, we have to certify our engineers' numbers and take questions anyone may have on that project, and then proceed with the 10-year assessment for those homeowners in the affected area. So, I will, before I open the public hearing, I'll defer immediately to our engineer if you just want to give an outline of what we're doing this evening and any information you have for us.
Good evening. We did this project in two phases. The first phase was from Glen Road to the upper cul-de-sac. There were 71 properties that were affected under the sidewalk assessment. Phase two was from Union Avenue to Glen Road, and there were 66 properties affected. Couple of things that I think everyone should know. Number one, the contractor has not been paid his final payment. We will do a final inspection on this project now that winter has almost finished. I couldn't do a final inspection until the snow melted. I have noted a few properties that I have some concerns, and there'll be some replacements in some sidewalks that I feel have not withstood the test of time for the winter. Number two, the two-year maintenance bond that the Borough is entitled to has not started because we have not given the contractor his final payment. I will be inspecting each and every one of those 71 properties under Phase One and Phase Two in the next two-week period of time. I was going to put up a little sign-up sheet. If anyone has a particular problem that they are aware of, that they haven't contacted me already, I'd like you to give me your name and address and a phone number so I can see it with you. Contractor's responsible for fixing any kind of problems whatsoever. As far as the unit prices that we used for your final assessment, they were significantly less than what was estimated under the preliminary assessment. We had used the figure of sidewalk of $75 a square yard. The contractor came in at $36 a square yard for both Phase One and Phase Two. And the aprons that we had estimated at $110 a square yard came in at $36 a square yard and $18 a square yard. In my review of the assessments for both preliminary and final, most of the numbers are less than one-third of what you were told before we began this project. With that said, that's all I really have to report on the project. We're 99% done other than replacement for some inappropriate or some poor areas that didn't withstand the test of time of the winter. That's where I am.
Okay. Well, I thank you for that. Does any council member have questions for the engineer before I reopen the public hearing? Okay, at this time I need a motion to open the public hearing to seek input from the residents in the area. Who makes that motion? I'm sorry. Councilman Sondemar?
Second.
Dawn Hudson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak specifically to the Rafkin Road assessment project, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. So, you're, just come on up, please. You're good. Name and address clearly for the record.
My name is Jerry Einuzi, and I'm at 228 Rafkin Road. And I might look at my notes a little bit.
Sure.
I just had a question I want to put before the council, because when the engineer initially came by and told us what was going on, we were told that if we wanted to have the sidewalk up to our steps done, that's something that could have been done. So, I thought that was going to happen. When the workers came around, they started digging up my sidewalk, and I asked them, "While are you going to start coming up to the steps?" They said, "Well, we'll be back. We're going to come back after everything's done." So, I said, "Okay, what can we do?" Then I found out that they're not going to do any paving from the sidewalk to your steps. But then down the street from me, 163 Rafkind was done from the sidewalk to their steps, and so was 151. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is if those two houses got sidewalk to steps, and I was told that couldn't be done.
Okay.
You know, I'm just looking at the numbers here, and for my property, which is pretty big, I'm right by the school, the total's 1,847.88, which over 10 years isn't bad. I calculated what it would cost to do the, at that price, and I'm not a mason, so I just figured out the square yards with a tape measure, but it would cost $230 at that price. So now, if I want to get new sidewalk from the street to my steps, which would look nice considering it could use it, there's no way I'm going to get that done for $230.
Again, I know, I'll defer immediately to the engineer, because there was confusion on what they would do. Some were done because of grading issues and the like, but I'll defer.
The contractor balked at us doing private work on private streets, on private property, and that was one of the problems why he didn't want to do the little piece that we had a couple of those situations in your neighborhood. One of your neighbors had a set of steps, and he says, "My guys just do flat work. Contractually, you can't force me to do it." And that's the situation we had. As far as the two properties that I think you're referring to, 163 and 151, one of them had to do with an elderly lady who needed a special ramp, and we convinced the contractor to do that, and we paid extra for that. We didn't do that under the unit prices. And the other one, I don't recall, and I apologize, I don't know every house by, I will ask the contractor again, because he's going to come back and do stuff, if he would consider doing your little stretch at this stage of the game, because it's not his flat work crew. If you saw the work, you understand what I mean. They don't get in their way, they would have put concrete over your shoes. But they were very good at what they did, but they're used to stripping, pouring, and moving on to the next 300-foot section. So, I'll ask again if I can't get your little piece done, I know exactly where you are.
It's 29 feet, so...
Yeah, I know, it's relatively simple.
Right. It'll cost more to have that done than the sidewalk at the price that we got it for.
Right, agreed. All right. Well, Paul will follow up. I'd ask you to leave your...
Phone number?
Yeah, I'll give you everything.
Okay.
Come on, just...
You know what, I'll put the fan there. Why don't you do it that way?
Is that okay? Am I done here with you?
Yes, and Paul will follow up and give back to you on that. Just put your name and phone there, or email. Thank you. Anyone else, please?
How you doing?
Good.
My name's Lee Carvax, 35 Rafkin Road. I'd like to thank everybody for getting this done. I have a child, and I have to walk up there every day. She feels a lot safer, I feel a lot safer. I do have an issue, talked to Paul about this back in November or October, the way my driveway was done. I figured I'll just put him and him on the list, because what we discussed was not done. So, I guess I'll just work that out with him, but thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about. I looked at it.
We are aware of that situation.
I know, I looked at it myself, yeah.
My name?
Would you?
Yeah. I send emails, phone calls, no one calls me back, no emails.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's that extremely steep situation, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else, please? Come on up, state your name. Yes, please.
Hi.
How are you?
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Giordano, and I'm at 205 Rafkind Road.
Yes.
The day that the realtor actually showed me my home, they were pouring the sidewalks. So, I wasn't in on any of the voting or any of that, which is fine. But my question is, the assessment that I'm assessed, okay, it says a 10-year assessment, you guys were saying?
Correct.
I took little notes here and there, but is that the amount of $1,116? Is that over a 10-year?
Correct. You'll be billed $111.60. I mean, that's not including interest. Our last, we just had a note sale a few weeks ago, it was half a percent, so the interest is going to be low, whatever it may be. But that's divided by 10, that number.
Okay.
And you have an option to prepay it, or you'll be billed once a year by the tax office for that amount.
It's added, it's added to my tax?
Well, it's not. You'll have, you'll get a separate assessment bill.
Okay.
So, once, if we approve the assessment tonight, our goal is to, by June, have those billings out for 2015's first payment, and then future bills, I believe, will be first quarter of the years going forward. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, just come on up.
Yes, my name is William Farr. I'm here representing my father's property at 202 Rafkin Road. Originally, I was just going to address his property, but I had a question, and I was wondering if you might be able to clear it up.
Sure.
In the paperwork that we received, we received assessments for both sidewalks and aprons. As I said earlier, it was $36 a square yard for sidewalks and $36 a square yard for aprons. I had contacted the Borough Administrator, and I asked if all the information should have been supplied to the residents on Rafkin Road, that they were going to be charged for sidewalks and for aprons. I was told, yes, they were supposed to be. Few people didn't do it. I've got a copy of a letter dated July 15th, 2013, that was signed by you there, that specifically states a sidewalk assessment. Says nothing whatsoever about anything else to do with aprons. I don't think that any of the residents on Rafkin Road should have to pay for something they were never told about.
Well, I'll address that. I mean, we had multiple public hearings. Did you attend any of the public hearings?
No, I did not.
Okay, we had multiple public hearings where it was clearly explained that the homeowner's responsibility was sidewalk and apron, not curbing, not paving, nothing more. We refer to it as the sidewalk, it's always been referred to as the sidewalk assessment project, the Rafkin Road sidewalk assessment, not in any way deliberately leaving out the term "apron," but it's always been on the record, the public record, that the aprons were absolutely part of that assessment.
But according to your paperwork, it's going to be billed separately. Because it's addressed separately, that's why I'm questioning it. Why wasn't it in the original assessment? Because it wasn't.
Wait, I don't understand. Build separately, original assessment? I don't have...
According to your letter, all you say is sidewalk assessment, and that came with a whole list of everybody's property with all the amounts of what the person would be charged for the work being done.
Right.
Okay.
That was the original...
That was the original letter.
Certified public hearing notice, right.
That was 2013, July 15th. But then, once we got the most recent documentation, it breaks it down for the contract pricing for sidewalks and for aprons. Well, the original information never broke it down for both.
I, again, I would just state on the record, repeating myself, that the aprons were always part of the assessment project.
But it was never written.
But it was, it was in the original calculations of fees, like you said, the first letter...
Not in your documentation, to start with.
Paul, the original letter had to have aprons on it, right?
Well, there was your letter, then there was my attachment about how the construction was estimated, and it did break down the fore and sidewalk and the apron as two different costs. Again, I stated at the beginning, one was estimated $75 a square yard, and one was estimated $110 a square yard. I don't have a copy of the mail that was sent out. I do have the preliminary list here, okay, that broke down both the sidewalk and the concrete assessment with a total, you know, so I respectfully disagree.
Well, the letter, the attachment to the letter you referred to, although the letter just referenced sidewalk assessment, the attachment clearly showed the breakdown of the entire project. Matter of fact, showed even the portion, the Borough's responsibility for the paving, and then each homeowner's responsibility, including the apron. So, it's never been, wasn't a hidden fact that aprons were absolutely included in this project?
Okay, obviously, we're going to get nowhere with this.
But we're just going to disagree.
The property at 202 Rafkin Road, I had spoke to, I believe it was Paul, who had been there to inspect my father's property. He has since passed on, so I'm responsible for the property. Out of his own pocket, he spent over $6,000 to redo his sidewalks himself.
Hmm.
Okay? In my discussion, which I believe was with Paul, I also mentioned, I said, "Look," I said, "The apron was done as well, all at the same time." I was told at that time that because of where they were going to put the curbs, we might lose maybe a foot of the apron where they have to dig out to put their forms in to form the curb.
Sure.
I said, "Fine." I said, "Then I can just leave it, I'll patch it myself, not a problem." I went up there several days after the construction had started. The people that were working there didn't speak English, and they completely demolished the entire apron. They shouldn't have done it in the first place. I don't think I should be charged for this.
Okay, well, you opted out on the sidewalks, and your assessment number to date clearly shows the sidewalk opted out. So, $276 current assessment listed for that apron. Any comment, Paul, on the conversations and...
Well, there were sections of apron that had to come out to put the curb in, and that was kind of explained, I thought we talked about that in the field itself.
They never took out the section that we discussed.
I don't have any...
Took out the entire apron.
Keep in mind that we were adjusting curb heights and to take care of drainage, whatever, so... I look at your numbers, and I know when we first met, the original number was $6,000, not realizing that your father had replaced all the sidewalk and apron. I do remember meeting you out there and discussing your father's health and the situation. I said, "I will save whatever I can."
Right.
So, you went down to 276. I really think, I can't apologize for the workers not speaking English, but I don't know what else to say on that, other than the council can waive if you feel that he has a legitimate concern that his father's apron that he put in should not have been replaced. I can't answer it this evening, but you could waive the cost on it.
Sure. Was, how old was the apron before the job?
About 18 months, I think.
Okay.
All the sidewalk was, all the sidewalk was saved, so we didn't have to replace all that.
The sidewalk was saved, okay.
Yes.
And was the original discussion that just a portion, a half or a quarter of the apron would need to be removed?
Typically, you would take, where the cut joint is, where you're from the back of the curb, so yes, not the whole apron, but a portion of the apron.
Okay.
You know, so... I have the measurements, I just, I can't debate the measurements, we just measured what was replaced.
Okay. All right, well, I'll tell you what I'm going to do. We, I'm hoping tonight we will approve these authorized assessments, and I will ask the council to consider waiving the 276 for your apron.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, please?
Hi, my name is Eleanor Byrne from 113 Rafkin Road. Do you have the amount that were assessed?
What was your address, ma'am?
113.
113.
Your assessment is zero.
Oh, then I'm going to go sit down. It's all my fault, but I just want to say thank you very much, because it's wonderful. I have, I have some health problems, and now, I measured it out. I can walk .4 tenths of a mile, but you do it four times, and it's a mile on that wonderful new sidewalk. Thank you.
Thank you. You could stay if you like.
Yes, I know.
Anyone else, please? Anyone else? Last call for Rafkin assessment? See some action over there?
Just jump out the last thing.
Yeah? Okay. Seeing no one, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the Rafkin assessment project.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I would ask for a motion to adopt the certified assessment numbers provided by our Borough Engineer. It'll be done in the form of a resolution identifying each person's property and their total assessment dollar amount. And I'd ask that motion to include the waiver of the apron at 202 Rafkin Road. Does anyone make that motion?
So moved.
Resolution number...
3.7.
2015 3.7. And we have a second on that, I apologize. Any further discussion? And I actually want to thank Paul for your great job. It went as smooth as it possibly could have, and it was quite smooth, and we took a problem area into a real nice situation, and...
There is two things, there were two survey markers that were removed that we will be replacing.
Okay.
Those people aren't here, but we're prepared to do that now that winter is gone. And I've learned never to pour concrete on goosey neck.
Definitely not.
The other issue, as Paul mentioned, there are some punch list items. We had a little pitting over the winter, we had some raised handicap access ramps, and some grass issues that didn't thoroughly come in, and they'll all be addressed before we finalize payment to that contractor. Any further discussion? Again, roll call.
Councilmember Costa.
Yes.
Delgado.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Yost.
Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing on the Walter T. Bergen Field Drainage Grant Application, which we are submitting to the State County. Every year, we submit an application for recreation improvements, and we have had great success from the county. Examples are the recently installed new restroom facility at Walter T. Bergen. We also are doing the restoration of the DeLasure Grandstand, partially completed, and the balance to be done this year. We also will be starting, hopefully late spring, our walking path at the Walter T. Bergen Project. And over the years, a lot more, renovation of the tennis courts, the basketball courts, all our playground equipment. The county's been good to us, and we have had success. This year, we are applying for drainage at the Walter T. Bergen Field. The improvements, we've done some exterior, some perimeter drainage work, which has helped, but there needs to be some more in the playing surface areas, and that is what we're seeking. So with that said, I need a motion to open the public hearing for the Walter T. Bergen Drainage Application.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak to that application? Please come on up, state your name and address for the record. Getting away easy. All right, so you know, and motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will notify the county and get that rolling, and usually we get a ward in September to hopefully build out in 2016, so... Thank you. Our next item is a presentation by the Paquonic River Coalition, Mr. Ross Kushner. Ross, how are you this evening?
Good.
Thank you for being here. What I'd like to do is have you do your presentation, and then Q and A after, have residents or anyone wishes to come up and ask questions of your report. That's what we'll, that's how we'll handle that, okay? So, the floor is yours.
I hope everyone can hear me without a microphone. Can you? I have a pretty big mouth, so... I'd ask somebody to dim the lights a little bit.
What do you think, this is high-tech or something here? In the box?
I'll get it. Just the switches.
Unfortunately, I didn't know I needed a zip drive to get it up in the screens here, so we're going to have to just deal with the one screen. I made it as large as I can, hopefully everybody can see it.
Okay. Is that all right? Michael Doan.
Yeah, is it visible enough?
Yeah.
That's good, right?
That's good.
And I, my name is Ross Kushner, I'm with the Paquonic River Coalition. I did submit an 11-page letter to the town, and it's out there on our website if anybody wants to look at it. It kind of gives this presentation more detail, but, you know, I understand some people don't want to read the book, they want to see the movie, you know? It's a lot easier. So, this presentation tonight is more visual, it's a little briefer, and if you bear with me, I'll go through it and just explain what we see on Federal Hill, what we see as the problems with expansion of the quarry. First question, you know, a lot of people don't know who is the Paquonic River Coalition. We're a nonprofit watershed association, our mission is preservation of the Paquonic River as a natural, aesthetic, recreational, and water supply resource, it pretty much covers it. On membership, we have more than 500 citizens in groups scattered across 84 towns. A lot of our members are in Bloomingdale, so we're part of the community. As far as achievements, we've created the official environmental resource inventories for the town of Butler, the town of Riverdale, the town of Paquonic. We're a licensed environmental laboratory, we've won the NJDEP Environmental Excellence Award, and the US EPA Environmental Achievement Award twice. We also created the first state-approved watershed management plan in New Jersey. So, you know, we've been around the block. As far as our operating area, we operate in the Paquonic River Watershed, the Wannakee River Watershed, so that's, covers all of Bloomingdale. So, we have about a 200-square-mile area. As far as Federal Hill, Federal Hill's been a concern since we formed, because, and it's been a concern for Bloomingdale since, you know, for at least the past 25 years, because you have a combination of sensitive land and a zone for affordable housing, and that's a, you know, that's a problematic mix. The 180-acre MIR tract on Federal Hill is currently authorized for a townhouse development. And what they finally agreed upon was 32 acres. This blue outlined section is going to be for the affordable housing. The rest of this 180-acre tract is going to be preserved as open space. It's not perfect, but I thought it was a really good compromise. Originally, the plan was to build half of that 180 acres. They were infringing on wetlands, so to squeeze them down into that corner was a real good deal. And this map actually was given to us by Tilcon, so thank you, Tilcon. Tilcon owns the adjoining quarry, and this is the quarry area, this light white outline here, this is the existing quarry, but this is the land they own. They're proposing now to purchase the MIR tract, prep this area, which they, you know, we're not really sure what prep pair means, but we think it means level it in preparation for building, and then they're going to donate that 32 acres back to Bloomingdale. And in return, they're going to be allowed to expand their quarry onto this 180 acres, and the whole 180 acres is going to be rezoned for quarry use. So, that's, that's the plan, and that's what we're discussing. What is Federal Hill? Federal Hill doesn't follow exact lot lines. You ask eight people, maybe you'll get eight opinions, but according to the Borough of Bloomingdale, in their report 2001, they said, "The approximately 450-acre wooded tract includes four types of wetlands, threatening endangered species, and extremely steep slopes." In 2009, they presented materials to the Highlands, which said, again, it's a 450-acre tract, and it includes the MIR tract. Along with the 180-acre MIR tract, you're obviously going to have to include part of the existing quarry and other lands to come to that total of 450 acres. Now, efforts to protect Federal Hill are nothing new. As early as 1989, Bloomingdale went to the State Planning Commission and asked them to change the state plan for Federal Hill from a suburban area, PA 2, to environmentally sensitive, PA 5. And they worked on that with the State Commission for 12 years, finally got it in 2001. And they worked on that with the State Commission for 12 years, finally got it in 2001, so that was a great effort and a great achievement. Federal Hill and the Highlands Act, the Highlands Act became law in 2004, it's quite a ways to go now. They divided the entire Highlands into two areas, a preservation area and a planning area, and this dotted line shows a division in Bloomingdale. This red line is the outline of Bloomingdale, okay? So most of Bloomingdale is in the restrictive preservation area where the Highlands Act has to be followed. A part of Bloomingdale is in the planning area where the following the Highlands Act is optional, you can choose to do it or not do it. And Federal Hill is in the planning area. In 2007, Bloomingdale said, hey, you know, we think you made a mistake with the mapping, you should put Federal Hill into the preservation area where it'd be more restrictive, better protected. And in their letter, they described the steep slopes and stream corridors, groundwater recharge, wetlands on Federal Hill as important values that needed protection. Unfortunately, this could not be done, because when you have a court-ordered affordable housing project, which Federal Hill has, you can't go ahead and include it, you know, it doesn't do any good to include it in the preservation area, so they didn't do that. So in 2008, Bloomingdale adopted Resolution 2008-11-dot-11, saying that it was in the best interest of Bloomingdale to conform to the Regional Master Plan, which meant they were gonna take the part of Bloomingdale that was in the planning area and conform as if it was in the preservation area, and they felt that that was in the best interest of Bloomingdale to do that. If you want to do that, then the Federal, the Highlands Council requires you to do a few things. One is to produce a series of reports, which Bloomingdale did. And we're very fortunate to have those reports today to rely upon, because one of them, the Highlands Environmental Resource Inventory, shows you chapter and verse what the environmental assessment is on Federal Hill. So the first thing we did, we looked at that ERI, and on Figure 2, this is Figure 2, they had a land use capability map zone. Bloomingdale's ERI said that Federal Hill belongs in the protection zone, and they said these are high resource value lands that are important to maintaining water quality, water quantity, and sensitive ecological resources and processes. And the entirety of Federal Hill, with the exception of the existing quarry, is in that zone. And this is, you know, like I said, this is not me, this is Bloomingdale. Bloomingdale's report also said land acquisition is a priority in that zone. Development activities will be extremely limited. Any development will be subject to stringent limitations on consumptive and depleted water use, degradation of water quality, and important to this project, impacts to environmentally sensitive land. So, you know, we know Federal Hill's environmentally sensitive, we're gonna protect it, this is what they said. Other than the existing quarry, Federal Hill's entirely in Figure, I think that's 4, a forest resource area. Forests resource areas, they said, include high ecological value forest areas, including those forest areas that exhibit the least fragmentation. So it, you know, forests that are still whole, and they're vital for the maintenance of ecological processes. Figure 7, they showed all the wetlands, streams, waterway buffers on Federal Hill, actually throughout Bloomingdale. Most of these are off limits to any development, including a quarry. And here we have a detail of what the quarry looks like, Federal Hill looks like. And this is the problem, you have the quarry here, they want to expand it this way, but very quickly, you start running to wetlands buffers, waterway buffers, you know, that's our concern, we'll get to that a little later. Steep slopes are an important feature in most of Federal Hill, anybody that lives around here knows, it's steep. Bloomingdale's report said disturbance of areas containing steep slopes can trigger erosion, sedimentation, resulting in the loss of topsoil, silting of wetlands, lakes, ponds, and streams damages and degrades wetland and aquatic habitat, especially trout streams that are found throughout the Highlands and receive the state's highest water quality protections. And this is very pertinent to Federal Hill, because of Paquannock River, this is Federal Hill here, the Paquannock River forms the border between Bloomingdale and Riverdale, that's that red line right there. So it's right at the base of this hill, everything drains to it. And when you start, you know, getting drainage problems on Federal Hill, you start impacting Paquannock River. And this, these are pictures taken when the quarry did a whoops and started discharging silt into the Paquannock River, and you can see what happens. And this is a trout production stream, it's a category 1 stream, it's the state's highest classification, so this is a big deal. Right now, Bloomingdale, Poton Lakes, a lot of the towns are now going into the Paquannock River and digging out the silt, because they think it's a problem that causes flooding, which causes more problems. So, you know, the best route is to never let the sediment get in there in the first place. You know, a quarry and a sensitive waterway do not mix. And I could tell you that from personal experience. As far as the steep slopes, Bloomingdale was intelligent about this. In 2013, they recognized the value and sensitivity of steep slopes, and they adopted an ordinance, ordinance 34-2013, for the express purpose of preventing steeply sloped lands like Federal Hill from being disturbed. The ordinance states it is found that the removal of vegetation and disturbance of soils on steep slopes will increase runoff and result in soil erosion and siltation, thereby having the potential of endangering public and private life. The ordinance prohibits substantial non-agricultural displacement of soil on slopes exceeding 15%. This includes almost every scrap of land on Federal Hill, including where they want to expand the quarry. Now, the 32-acre coa development is exempt from this, obviously, but the expanded quarry would not be. On Figure 12, Bloomingdale shows most of Federal Hill's critical wildlife habitat, and they stated that these lands are habitats of an animal species identified as endangered, threatened, of special concern, or of regional conservation priority in the Highlands, and that the lands are critically important in maintaining biological diversity in the Highlands region. These are Bloomingdale's words, not mine. And you can see, again, almost all of Federal Hill, with the exception of the existing quarry, is in that zone. That's that light green color. I know they have wood turtle up there, which are a state-threatening species, they're associated with the wetlands up there, so, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty critical land. Figure 15, preserved lands. Bloomingdale has a heavy investment in the protection of Federal Hill. They spent more than $1 million to protect the 70-acre bi-coastal tract up there. It's the largest piece of borough-owned open space. I mean, you have a lot of open space in Bloomingdale, very little of it is municipal, most of it is, you know, county, state, and that's the bi-coastal tract right there, you can see it's right on the border of the quarry. So if you want to stop the quarry from expanding, you know what you do? You spend $1 million, and you buy the bi-coastal tract. That's what Bloomingdale did.
When was that?
What's that?
When was that?
I would ask you to hold your questions till the end.
Okay, I was just wondering when the date was.
Ah, it was in the 80s. Am I correct? 80s, 90s?
That acquisition, 2000?
Was it that recent?
2002, yeah. But it wasn't acquired to stop the quarry, it was acquired with the hopes of saving, stopping development.
Well...
Put a court order.
Again, in my opinion, quarry is development. You know, ask, ask the wood turtles that question. Am I going the wrong way? Now, it's important to know, you know, you can, you create reports, but it's important to know whether those reports are accurate. Well, Highlands Council said those reports were accurate. In 2011, they wrote to Bloomingdale saying the property, Federal Hill, is indeed extensively constrained by Highlands resource features, including critical wildlife habitat, high-integrity riparian areas, Highlands open waters, open water buffers, forest in a forest resource area, and steep slopes. So, you know, they said, yeah, you're right on with your reporting. Now, this is the Tilcon proposal, but conceptual, we've seen this before, you've been here before. And what they're talking about is they want to push this quarry out from, this is their limit now, all the way to that black line. They didn't give us any exact figures on what the space is, you know, so I fiddled around with the ruler. I figured it's about 100 acres and about 1,400 feet at the widest. Now, they say the 110-year anticipated mine limit, but when I asked them, well, you know, you said on those numbers? No. So, you know, what, what that 110 really means in real time is anybody's guess. The problem we have with the conceptual versus the actual, when you start comparing where they showed that quarry expanding to, it's like right through the middle of the wetlands. Now, that's illegal. So, you know, we had a problem with that. I mean, why would you want to show where you're gonna expand your quarry into wetlands when you know you can't do that? Now, some people have said, oh, you know, well, you know, what are you worried about? They can't, they can't quarry wetlands. That's not our concern. Our concern is if they're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars, tens of millions of dollars maybe for this property, and they know they can't quarry there, where are they gonna quarry? You know, are they just gonna take the bull and go home? Now, you start looking at areas like this, this isn't constrained by wetlands. These areas over here, they're not constrained by wetlands, okay? Maybe they're gonna quarry there, I don't know. You know, and when you ask for this entire tract to be rezoned for quarry, you know, it gives them some options. I mean, if they were intent on just using a small area up here, what I would do is subdivide it, and then just have that, that lot, that new lot, zoned for quarry. Gives everybody a feeling of confidence. To me, when you rezone this whole area, 180 acres for a quarry, you can quarry the whole thing. Now, despite these concerns, Bloomingdale officials have discussed the idea of controlling the expansion of quarry with an ordinance, okay? And that's a good question. How effective is an ordinance at controlling land use? Now, Bloomingdale has an existing ordinance that covers the Mier Tract. The existing development ordinance says only 32 acres will be developed, the other 148 acres must be reserved as open space. Okay, we're in a room now discussing getting rid of that ordinance completely. How effective is an ordinance at controlling land use? My opinion, not very. Forests cover recharge and flooding. These are really important issues in Bloomingdale, because the area that's known as the Flats, Van Damme Ave area floods when it rains, okay? Now, rainwater is either absorbed into the soil as quote-unquote recharge, or it isn't. You can't absorb it into the soil if you take the soil away, all right? Forested land provides the highest rate of recharge, bedrock and pavement provide the lowest. Okay, good things to know. Now, when you start converting land from forest to a quarry, what was a good recharge area turns to runoff. And runoff means when the rain falls down, it runs off, there's nothing to absorb it, okay? Runoff makes flooding worse when it rains, obviously, because instead of the water getting soaked into the ground and go straight into the streams and rivers. On the flip side, water that is no longer recharging groundwater reduces river and stream flows later on. That's not something most people think about, but it happens, because that, once it gets into the groundwater, then it trickles back to the streams and back to the rivers during non-rainfall periods. But if it never gets in there in the first place, that's not gonna happen. So you get more runoff when it rains, more flooding when it rains, lower stream flows when it isn't raining. Now, the Van Damme Ave area of Bloomingdale, as I mentioned, is already flood-prone, that's a pill park there during a good rainstorm. As soon as you start to increase the runoff, you're gonna make a bad situation worse. You know, it, it can't go any other way. And as I said, the Paquannock River's already got problems with low summer flows, and those low summer flows cause high summer water temperatures. If Federal Hill's converted from a forest to a quarry, that situation is gonna become worse, because, you know, you're not gonna get that, that good recharge and good flow from that. Now, Bloomingdale did realize this, that these are not stupid people. Their steep slope ordinance adopted in 2013, that's less than two years ago, to prevent the disturbance of steep slopes and protect lives and property. It was meant to stop the exact type of disturbance that we're discussing tonight. Now, engineers, you know, they, they always promise to control runoff by using engineer solutions. They're gonna put in detention basins, they're gonna put in retention basins, and on and on. The fact is, if these engineering promises were always valid, if you could always rely on engineering to fix everything, there'd never be a need for a steep slope ordinance. But there is a need, and that's why we adopted it. These are examples that I came up with quickly off the top of my head when engineering fails. And why does communities know that? When these promises fail, it usually happens at the worst possible time, during a hurricane, during a rainstorm, you know? That top right-hand corner, that's my hand there, that's a tributary stream of the Class 1 Westbrook, when the stormwater system failed in a quarry in Ringwood. And it just poured all kinds of sediment into the tributary, destroyed the tributary, and did a heck of a number on the Westbrook. And, you know, if you're not controlling the quality of the runoff, you're certainly not controlling the quantity. The other picture there is a rock slide that closed the entry road into the enclave at Riverdale. A resident said in the paper, somebody had to prove that wall. Yeah, somebody did, an engineer. You know, an engineer said, oh yeah, we're not gonna have a problem with that, we'll look at it, okay? You know, thank God nobody was under it when it fell, so. Engineer solutions are, you know, a little iffy. And you gotta remember that Tilcon's had over 75 violations in New Jersey over the last five years for failing to meet state requirements. So, you know, I'm not saying they're, they're the devil, but they're, they're certainly not a little bit white, okay? So think about that when you think about things failing. Also, Tilcon has admitted that the extension of the new quarry, the timeline for it, they're unknown. They don't know where they're gonna quarry, they don't know when they're gonna quarry. So, you know, I have a lot of respect for Paul Darmofalsky, but for this council to go to him and say, give us a report that shows there's not gonna be any excess flooding, when they don't know what they're gonna quarry, they don't know where they're gonna quarry, how can he possibly do that? I'm sure he tried, I'm sure he did a good job, but, you know, it's an impossible task, Now, as far as economics, you know, taxes and land values, they're not environmental issues, you know, PRC shouldn't consider them. Well, we really have to, because the argument's being made that the economic gains will outweigh the environmental losses. Will they? You know, you kind of have to explore these things. Taxes in the Highlands, I mean, one thing we keep hearing is, well, because the Highlands Act went in, you know, it's caused the taxes to spiral out of control in Bloomingdale. You know, has it? You know what? No, it hasn't. The effective tax rate actually went down, okay, in 2004, when the Highlands Act went in, and it kept falling, every year till 2009, and then it rose till 2014. You know what happened in Halden, a town which has no land in the Highlands? The exact same thing. So when you say the Highlands Act causes the taxes to go up in Bloomingdale, I don't think that's true. I mean, give me the proof of it. Here's proof that it didn't. It actually dropped when the Highlands Act went in, and it followed the same pattern in other towns that had no lands in the Highlands whatsoever. So I don't think it had much effect, but, you know, you can keep making other things. As far as relevant studies, we did look at the Stone Coast Study from Richmond, Michigan for an important reason. It really closely examined the relationship between the distance from a home to a quarry and the impact that has on home values. They found a 10% reduction in values for homes up to a mile away, closer to the homes, the greater the impact. Now, some people have said, well, you know, that's, that's a, a new quarry, this is an expanded quarry. But as the quarry moves and gets closer to your home, it's gonna have a greater impact on your home. And more houses are gonna be affected if there is an affected area. And it isn't just Michigan. There was a recent court decision in New Jersey, Warren Township versus Suckness, it's called, that recognized the impact of a quarry. Court found that homes were affected by the noise and dust from nearby quarry, and the damage that quarry blasting caused. And the tax appeal, the court accepted a 25% reduction in home value due to the quarry. And that quarry, I think it was like, I don't know, 600, 800 feet away. So, you know, there's, there's precedence in New Jersey. So if Tilcon's quarry is expanded, means a greater impact on nearby homes, it means that more homes will be within the impacted area, at least according to this study. How might this change home values? According to this study, we did the math. From our estimation, there's something like 300 homes that were within a mile of the existing Tilcon quarry. If they have an average price of $350,000, reduction of 10%, you know, you're talking $10 million. That's a lot of money. It can mean tax appeals, it also, you know, it also is very unfortunate for the homeowners, I can tell you that. Now, is the Stone Coast Study accurate? Well, we, we looked at a few homes in Poton Lakes, two that were within a quarter-mile quarry, two or three-quarters of a mile from the quarry. They were all three-bedroom, one and a half to two baths. In fact, I think the only one and a half bath was the one that was furthest away, so. The Stone Coast Study predicted a decrease in value of 13%, depending on how close they were. The actual decrease was 12%, pretty close. Now, this is in no way definitive, looking at four homes, okay? But, hey, common sense tells me, tells everyone, a nearby quarry is not a good selling point. A quarry in your backyard is not gonna make your home value go up, you know, so you always have to weigh that in with this study. Now, the latest and greatest, Tilcon of Bloomingdale gave the consulting firm, Bergus Associates, quite a task. Reduce a reexamination report for the Bloomingdale Master Plan that shows the Mier Tract in Bloomingdale would benefit from an expanded quarry. In our opinion, that wasn't an easy thing to do, you know, but, hey, if you want to get paid, you do the report. First, there's a long list of reports and documents that we've outlined tonight, from 1989 all the way up to 2013, produced by Bloomingdale, showing the environmental sensitivity of Federal Hill and Bloomingdale's efforts to protect it. How do you get around this? One good answer is separate the Mier Tract from Federal Hill. For example, that reexamination report states the Mier Tract adjoins preserved lands known as Federal Hill. It also says the quarry and Mier Tract are connected to an area known as Federal Hill. These statements suggest that Federal Hill, the quarry, and the Mier Tract are all different things, but they're not. Remember when we asked what is Federal Hill? As noted, this information was in the 2009 Highlands Initial Assessment Report. Quote, "A 180-80 acre portion of the 450-acre Federal Hill Tract, Mier Bloomingdale Estates, receives Superior Court Mandate approval." Clearly, the 180-acre Mier Tract is a portion of the 450-acre Federal Hill Tract, they're not separate. And there is no way to arrive at a total of 450 acres without including part of the existing quarry and additional preserved land. Now, this is the incredible part to me, that 2009 report and the 2014 report that contradicts it were both produced by Bergus Associates, but they say completely different things, all right? I call that a whoops. As far as affordable housing, the reexamination report might also attempt to show that the rezoning would help to create affordable housing. It did try. The report states the site is included in a 2013 court order to permit expansion of quarry-related uses in order to facilitate the development of affordable housing on the Mier Tract. But this is not correct. The court order says only that the court does not consider the rezoning inconsistent with creation of affordable housing. It does not say it will facilitate this creation. Whoops again. Location, location, location. That's what we hear about real estate. Now, this is the border of the Affordable Housing Zone. That black line is where they want to extend the quarry to. Look how close that is. This is the buffer now. All this orange land, this is going to be the buffer. What is it, 200 feet? How is that going to promote affordable housing? They can't sell this land now. They can't get a developer interested now. So, you know, having a quarry in their backyard is not going to be a good thing. And having every stitch of land surrounding it rezoned for a quarry, so... Support from other plans, they also tried to look at that. The reexamination report states that the borough's 2013 open space plan notes that sufficient open space has been acquired in Federal Hill. Nowhere does the open space plan say this. In fact, a tract of land on Federal Hill currently owned by Tilcon is shown on several exhibits in that plan as potential open space, okay? That's whoops number three. The reexamination report states in several places that according to the open space plan, preservation of the Meere tract and quarry tract is not feasible. Again, nowhere in the open space plan is that stated. Instead, a development ordinance for the Meere tract requires that 148 acres, 82% of that tract, be set aside as open space. If 82% of that land is going to be preserved as open space, how is preservation not feasible? Could more land be preserved on Federal Hill? In addition, the quarry and the Meere property are listed as potential acquisitions for open space by the State County, which has its own open space fund. That's whoops number four. And ignoring data. We're, you know, I can't believe this. That reexamination report never mentions, uses all those reports that were developed for Highlands compliance, despite the fact that they're the latest and greatest reports on Federal Hill. They give the most extensive review of Federal Hill. They have all the environmental features of Federal Hill documented. It's as if they didn't even exist. And, you know, a lot of them were produced by Bergus Associates who produced this report. Crazy. I just don't understand why that is. The reexamination report also ignores the resolution adopted by Bloomingdale that says they should see Collins' compliance and the steep slope ordinance they adopted less than two years ago. This rezoning would violate it. Why? Why do they ignore that? It seems crazy. Now, master plan requirements. Any master plan or master plan revision has to consider the realities of the land. By ignoring the latest relevant information, Bloomingdale's protective ordinances, and promoting the destruction of environmentally critical areas, this reexamination report does not accomplish that. Finally, what about the Highlands? Bloomingdale took $65,000 from the state of New Jersey to be used in creating reports to comply with the Highlands Regional Master Plan, okay? They adopted a resolution saying that was in the best interest of Bloomingdale before the regional master plan. The proposed rezoning is directly in opposition to that process. Every bit of advancement on doing that has stopped. They haven't returned the money. They haven't overturned their resolution that says it's in the best interest of the town. How are you planning to make this right? I would like to know. Now, in summary, Bloomingdale has a long history trying to protect Federal Hill. They have a long list of documents, a bunch of reports created by Bloomingdale that say Federal Hill's an environmentally sensitive area. The sensitivity is confirmed by the Highlands Council. It's ignored in the borough's master plan reexamination. The existing zoning does what it can to protect that area by increasing open space and eliminating development to the extent practical. The zoning is going to be overturned. Studies suggest that home values will reduce in the area by expansion of the quarry. I've heard nothing to refute that. Flooding is already a major issue next to Federal Hill. How will converting forests to a quarry right next to that tract improve that condition? Current borough ordinances do not seem to offer much protection, as I showed. New ordinances designed to control the quarry, I see them having the same flaws. Surrounding a co-development site with a quarry, I don't think that's going to promote the creation of affordable housing. I think it's going to have the opposite effect. Bloomingdale's taken taxpayer funds to comply with the Highlands Act. Okay, now what? Bloomingdale's invested heavily in open space on Federal Hill. Adjacent disturbance will sacrifice the values these lands were intended to protect. They're up there for a reason. And now you're going to put a quarry next to them? The periodic reexamination of the master plan has major flaws. These have to be fixed before anybody can adopt that plan. The quarry expansion seems unlikely to follow the path shown by Tilcon just for the reasons that we outlined with the wetlands buffers and so on. And almost no concrete data has been offered yet to the community on community benefits, cost, the extension of the new quarry, timelines for the expansion. Everything's conceptual. Yet we're moving forward with engineering reports, court decisions, master plan changes. Why are we doing all this? I mean, we need to stop and think. I think it's time for a real dialogue that at least looks at alternatives. Our suggestion would be, instead of extending the quarry, stop the quarry now. That 260 acres is the best growth area that Bloomingdale has. It's already quarried, so it's already ruined. You might as well take advantage of it and build there. A new road they're talking about now would link this property to 287, so you'd have good access to it. And if you use a small part of it for your affordable housing obligation, you'd be way ahead of the game. Why sacrifice all this environmentally sensitive land when you already have this land? The rest of the quarry could be used as commercial property. Some even is open space. Maybe leave this as open space. You know, it's a win-win. You wouldn't have to destroy your home values. You wouldn't have to destroy environmentally sensitive land. You wouldn't have to risk more flooding. You know, it makes so much sense. Now, I don't ever ask people to take my word for it. What we try to do here is document every report that we used, every site that we accessed. And if, I'm hoping that the borough will put this up on the website. It's going to be up on the Paquonic River Coalition website. Go there, and I urge you to do your own research. Educate yourself. You know, we listed every little scrap of data we used, so... Now I'll open it to questions.
All right, hold on one second. Please, if you'd like to talk on someone we just hit all the switches in the box. Appreciate that. Thank you, Ross, very much.
You mind if I sit?
Right there. Sorry, hold on a second. Okay, well, I'll ask the council first, and then we'll open up to the public to speak. So, again, Mr. Kushner, thank you for the information. I would like that in an email form. I will put it on the borough website.
I have it in PDF format, so you can...
That's fine. Just send me an email on that. You have my email. And we will post it. We will also, you know, share with the planning board as well for their review. So, did you have a question?
No, no, that's all I can say.
Okay, so for that, okay. Before I open to public, I just wanted to say a few things. We, you mentioned just a couple of things that really have nothing to do with specifically this Tilcon conceptual plan. But the steep slope ordinance, and maybe a planning board member here can help me. 2013, that's not when it was done. It was, the original steep slope ordinance was done in very early... Can anyone help me? Craig, Bill? In '88, 1988. I just want to clarify. 2013, it was an amendment to the steep slope ordinance, I believe, to take out residential lot and block. Mr. Graff, can you help me with that? Right, so I just want to clarify. 2013, it was an amendment to the 1988 steep slope ordinance, and the amendment was to take out single-family home lot and blocks to be affected by that ordinance. Just want to clarify that. The other thing I just want to clarify is you mentioned, "They state the Highlands Preservation Area has impacted taxes." Who's "they"? I just want to know, I just...
I mean, actually, I've seen emails from you that say, you know, "Due to the restrictions placed upon us by the Highlands Act, we need to do something to reduce our taxes."
Combined with the voluminous amounts of open space the borough already has. I mean, I feel our tax rate is such because of the amount of open space. So, I don't think I'm ever on the record saying it's the Highlands Preservation Area causing our tax increase. Our taxes are such because of the amount of open space, the small amount of commercial ratables and lack of revenue. I just want to clarify that. Because you said "they" say. So I just wanted to be a little more clear on that. The other thing is, you say there's nothing concrete because this is a conceptual stage. We are, yes, there was a reexam done, but we have had public hearings on the concept by Tilcon. We've invited you at your request to be here, our engineer. I am going to ask the council to forward this to the planning board to review all these same reports and make a recommendation to the governing body and, you know, and anything that they see we should look at, not look at, and the like. So, it is conceptual. There is nothing concrete as far as boundaries. If the borough was to proceed, we're not going to give Tilcon, you know, open free reins on the entire parcel. You mentioned earlier, they should just concentrate on this area. You know, if there was, I just want to ask you from your expertise, if there was a, let's say Tilcon extended to that second line and drew a line around the wetlands that concern you, would you have less of a problem with this concept?
I would bow, I would like to see if that were proposed, a sit-down meeting with maybe the endangered species people from the state to discuss what lands they think are critical, most critical.
Okay.
And how do you work around that? So, I would bow to their expertise on that.
Okay.
You know, John, I'm using your data that tells me that this is, you know, environmentally critical area. So, you tell me why it was listed as environmentally critical.
But my question was if, because your conceptual plan is showing those three lines.
Their concept is to expand the quarry onto what Bloomingdale says is environmentally critical.
But you know as well as I that the wetlands would prohibit them from doing that, even though the line's drawn conceptually there.
No, all the land beyond the quarry is listed as environmentally critical, not only wetlands.
Okay. But my question to you is if they were to extend to the second line and not include the wetlands in their conceptual idea, would you have less of a concern with the concept?
Well, smaller is always better.
Okay.
But, you know, those might be the most important lands for, you know, the blue-spotted salamander. I had no idea, so, you know...
Okay. All right, before I open to public, I just want to say to the public, again, this is at a conceptual stage. And the only, the reason the governing body is exploring it is to achieve the court order for affordable housing combined with an opportunity for increased revenue. And that's what we're exploring. And, you know, we're weighing out the issues Mr. Kushner raises. Now, we're going to do our due diligence, and we're actually doing studies on home values. We're doing study on flooding. We're going to have concrete information on potential financial benefits. And that's why we're exploring it. You know, if, I said on the record a few times, if this was a 450-acre parcel without an existing quarry, I don't think we'd be having this conversation. It's the fact that it is an existing quarry. And yes, 140 acres by ordinance from the court order states in perpetuity those 140 would be preserved. And this council's looking at, hey, if we were to extend 50, 60, 80 acres of those 140 and still preserve 100, doesn't it make sense? And that's what we're doing. I just want to make that clear of where we're coming from.
This is the slide I was referring to, John. I mean, you can see right beyond the existing quarry, all that light green is considered critical wildlife habitat. Now, you know, this is your report. So you must have a background somewhere that tells you it's critical wildlife habitat. So I would suggest to you that you look at your own creation of this report and determine why you determined that that was critical wildlife habitat.
I agree, okay. Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on one second. Before, I just, the councilman had a question, I believe.
It's not a question. It's just, when you were talking about flooding and you showed the rivers, the banks and everything going over, I think we ought to be really clear. The water from the flooding that happens in this town does not come from Federal Hill. It comes from Up County. And there's no doubt about it. It comes from the upper end of Knolls Road. Everything comes across, comes across through the rivers. Underneath, comes down the Paquonic River and overflows at the bank. And everybody knows that, and the flats get flooded terribly. I've been working floods here for 35 years since I've been in the fire department. And the water always comes over the banks of where I'm telling you. And that's a fact. You can ask guys that have been here longer than me. It's not coming from the upper end of Federal Hill.
Right.
River's slow. I'm just telling you because I've worked it and three feet, four feet of water coming across Main Street and right through Reeves Avenue, down through Ryerson Avenue, all the way down to the lower end of Main Street and into Riverdale and Pompton. Comes over the banks there terribly.
I would like to speak to that.
Just, that's fine. But just, you know, in my experience working floods in this town, the water comes from Up County.
Right. Water, the runoff comes, flooding comes from developed areas. Federal Hill right now is an undeveloped area. If you push a quarry onto forested land If you push a quarry onto forested land and changed it from undeveloped to developed, you're not going to be able to make that statement.
Charlottesville reservoir is not a developed area.
No, and the flooding doesn't come from Charlottesville.
Comes over from down through all the upper things, we release all the dams and come down.
Flooding doesn't come from Charlottesville. You are so fortunate to have 35,000 acres of protected watershed land upstream view. If you didn't, all the flooding that you're seeing comes from Butler and Bloomingdale and Kinnella, below that reservoir.
I respectfully disagree with you there. Because we were told from the last flood that happened down there.
Who told you that?
Chief. When I was chief, we got it a May day.
Oh, yeah.
Because the reservoir people either opened everything up, we got a, the dam broke, and it was a wall of water coming down when we were already underwater.
What they did was lower the bascule floodgates.
But it affects us.
And, and when they, for some obscure reason, they lowered them, could not get them back up.
Right.
But it affects us. Okay? Now, they're not allowed to use the bascule floodgates anymore.
Right.
And they haven't been since that date. So, that concern is gone.
But the flooding that's happened here in the past 35 years I've been in the fire department has come from up county.
Now, everybody, everybody blames the up county, but the development in this town is what, it can't be any other way.
I disagree.
I know you disagree. No one wants to think it's their town, but the building in this town, in Butler, okay?
Well, the, I would agree, the flooding in the flats is from our town. That's all the, all the storm drains from Arthur v. Day, Rafkin, Knolls.
And Butler isn't helped because it.
Ross, let me finish, please. Comes down to the flats. Comes down Reeves, makes a left on Oak, and hits Stelazier and floods there. But the reason it floods is because the volume in the river results that it can't discharge quick enough, but the volume in the river, we're flooding, we're flooding at the car wash, we're flooding, you know, above, you know, this residential area and development in Bloomingdale, so it absolutely is coming from up county. Flats, I agree, is from within our own town, but if the flow is quicker within the river from the up county volume of water, that water wouldn't back up in the flats. You know, it wouldn't.
There were ones, at one time.
But I don't want to get off the subject.
There were, you know, there were, at one time, 180 mills operating on the Paquonic River, okay? Newark had to buy out every one of those mills. Do you know why they had to do that? Because there was no more enough water to power those mills. So, when you say flooding is, comes from up county.
It was a combination of all the variables, there's no question.
I mean, if the reservoirs are full, yeah, it's going to come from there.
Right.
If the reservoirs are down, they save you because they hold all that water.
I understand that, but when we flood, they're not them.
The other thing before.
Well, you know what? When you flood, it has to be, it has to come from up county and from the town.
Right, it definitely does.
I disagree with that.
But, hold on one second. Listen, we're not going to, we're not going to cross talk. We're going to come to the microphone, and Ross, could you do me a big favor being you're down there? Could you pull that microphone to the corner, right in front of Mr. Riley? If you would, you come behind the table. Just so they're not standing right on top of you when they come up. As far as you can get it.
Thank you.
So, again, orderly, everyone will come up, you'll address the chair, and then we'll engage, Ross can answer questions as well as we can.
I appreciate that.
Right. The one thing before I open to the public is you made a comment too about the town has taken taxpayer money through Highlands planning money. The planning money that the town has taken to date was for planning and opting in the preservation area. The town has not, because we're not opted in the, in the planning area, we're not entitled to funding yet. The town has not accessed Highlands money regarding the planning area of the Highlands, which is this parcel of land.
But the reports you submitted did cover the planning area.
We're not, but, just to clarify your statement, the town was kind of misleading. The town took taxpayers' money, hasn't given it back, you know, just the money that's been spent before my time, some during my time, was on the planning area, in the process of opting into the planning area.
Can I, can I address that?
But we're not, we can't even access. There's, there's money on the table for the Highlands for the planning area.
I know chapter and verse what Bloomingdale did.
Mm-hmm.
Bloomingdale first went to the Highlands and asked for an $11,000 grant to produce what it's called an initial assessment report. And what that is, you create a report that determines whether it's a good idea for Bloomingdale to opt in with the whole town or not, okay?
Right.
And you gave that $11,000 to Burgess Associates, they produced the Highlands initial assessment report, which you submitted to the Highlands Council. Based on that report, in 2008, you passed an ordinance after reviewing the report, which said, you know what? It is a good idea for us to opt in, and we are going to opt in. Then you went back to the Highlands, and they gave you another $54,000 to produce reports to opt in the entire town, which you then produced.
Right.
So, to say it's only for the preservation area, no, that's not true. It covered the preservation area and planning area because you told the Highlands that you wanted to opt in the entire town.
So, to, but the funding to seek those, the best interests of the borough, how they should proceed, and then opt in the preservation area, I just want to clarify, the borough didn't misspend taxpayers' money, is what you implied.
Yes, you did if you don't opt in.
Okay. Well, again, we haven't opted in yet, but, correct. So, I mean, it's not misspending taxpayers' money, the money is there for that exact analysis to be done.
Right. But you brought, you did everything you should have done until 2011, and then since TILCON's come forward, you've sat on your hands for four years.
Okay. If anyone wishes to speak, orderly to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Frank O'Reilly, 21 Pearl Street. I'd like to make a request that you postpone public discussion on this issue until we see the presentation by the borough engineer regarding the quarry, because then we'll have more information and we can ask more intelligent questions.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with that, and that's probably, it's a great suggestion, Mr. O'Reilly. Council, you good with that? Have our engineer do his presentation, then we'll, we'll address Ross and Paul at the same time? Okay? So, with that said, I, well, Mr. Kushner, again, thank you for your presentation, and if you'd sit tight, okay?
I have an easel and a board, so where would you like me? Be nice now.
Yeah. How about right in front of the screen for now, then we'll move it before we go to Q&amp;A. You really set me up for that one.
Was that right there?
Kind of. I was polite in my response.
You were very polite, Mayor.
Hmm? Sorry, Richwell. Never mind.
Rich is in here, Richwell?
Seemed to be. Nobody's frozen yet.
I'm going to move again.
Yeah. No matter where you go, somebody has to move. No matter where you sit, somebody has to move.
I've introduced a few times tonight, Paul Dermokowski was authorized by the governing body to do a flood study on the supposed concept. Why, I have asked why you did the presentation. We'll go to Q&amp;A.
By way of introduction, this board that we have here, the mayor and council, have copies of, a reduced copy of this map. What we did after hearing the presentation by TILCON twice and the public discussion, we took the approved MIR plans for the MIR tract that is inclusive of the development that's going to take place there, that's approved by the courts, and by way of information, maybe I can stand over this side and not block too many people. What we're going to have is, we have 180-acre tract, but we have the famous 32 acres that's been approved for development. That access is off of Union Avenue, and it's a total of six buildings that will be constructed for the 300-something units that were approved by the court system, some of which are low and moderate. That 32 acres, that drainage, drains toward the Wanacue, goes down Union Avenue, it's not constructed yet, and it's going to go toward the Wanacue system, so it's not part of the Paquonic system, it goes into the Wanacue River. And that's the way it's all approved by the county, the state, Bloomingdale, whatever. When we were asked to look at the flooding study for the MIR tract in the event that TILCON receives approval, we felt it was prudent to take the TILCON plans, okay? What we've done is we've taken their famous 70-year line, the 90-year line, and 110-year line, and we've put it right on top of the approved plans. Now, you've got to see a lot of colors on here. The blue colors are the streams that exist on the MIR tract itself. We had green areas that are polluted, which are the wetlands. There are also significant buffers on both of those tracts. This is a C1 category. The, uh. The stream corridor is a C1 category, meaning that it feeds the Paquonic River, which is a trout production quality stream, means a 300-foot buffer. So, those buffers are shown on here. They were approved by the state, and we also have the wetlands, that they have 150-foot buffer. When we look at the effect of what TILCON showed on their conceptual plan, basically the 70-year line exists. There's a little bit of area that is not falling within the buffer that they could quarry, but you will never achieve the 90-year line or the 110-year line because it's always strict. We made an assumption as your borough engineer, it's not going to touch. DEP is not going to give a commission to do that. So, we did our study based on the 70-year line and the 70-year line on. That acreage is probably close to 20 acres of what you're looking at. So, everyone understands how stormwater flows off of Federal Hill onto the MIR piece. Right now, the area of the 70-year, 90-year, and 110-year, which are not going to be quarried as far as we're concerned, it all flows toward the MIR tract. That MIR tract is independent of Van Dam Broek, which is the cause of your flooding on the flats. This outlet into the Paquonic River is a little bit downstream of where Van Dam Broek is, so your flooding that occurs on your flats is not as a result of Federal Hill. In the event that Bloomingdale should decide to allow TILCON to quarry, we've done calculations for the 70-year line, and basically what happens is when you clearcut a piece of property, you get more stormwater runoff. You have a condition that we have rock and rockout crops with a little bit of overburdening, that there's some soils there. As they quarry that property, you get more and more stormwater runoff. Our calculations indicate that if that was to take place, you would need to put in a detention basin. Now, contrary to Ross's opinion, we do have some detention bases that work, and they, it would be about 110,000 cubic foot of detention required to cover the additional stormwater runoff in the event that TILCON clearcut the property and started quarrying and kept the flow going toward the MIR piece of property. We looked at an alternative also, and saying, listen, if TILCON's going to start working their, their way back, don't let them clearcut, put an ordinance in effect that says you can only cut the areas that you're going to go in a five-year period of time. That water that now flows toward the MIR is now going to flow toward TILCON's quarry itself. Now, TILCON's quarry located in Bloomingdale is a very unique situation. There is no outfall by gravity from that facility. You have a hole in the ground, you have a pond that they use for watering, for dust control and collecting their stormwater. That pond, about 50-foot deep, and there is no outfall for it. They need to pump stormwater up 100-foot, get through 287, go through settling ponds, and then go into the Paquonic River. That's the cause of some of the violations, but TILCON or a pump controls the entire stormwater on their particular quarry. Now, the engineer in me says, what a unique opportunity to control stormwater and flooding. We'll use TILCON and flood them out, don't let them turn the pumps on until the rainfall's over and pump it out under dry seasons. Now, I'm not looking at water temperature with any of my stuff, I'm just looking at stormwater control, but the potential to engineer a solution, whether you want to put a detention basin on the MIR tract, or you force them to send the water toward the TILCON quarry and regulate it that way, is that, my opinion is that it can be controlled. Have I done the design on it? No, I've just taken the conceptual size of a detention basin and said, this is where it's going to go. So, the bottom line is, from a stormwater management or a flood control, I think as your engineer, it's all controlled. Will I be here 60 years from now? I don't think so. But you can certainly put in enough teeth to an ordinance that would make this done to the standards that wherever we're going to be 60 years from now can be done. And that's, that's my report in a nutshell. Of the 180-acre, 180-acre tract, 30's going for the development, about 20's going for quarrying, and then the rest can be restricted. And those are the numbers that I think you should understand. In my opinion, of where we are environmentally, I don't think they're ever going to get beyond the 70-year line. And we did the calculations accordingly. If you want, I can continue this exercise and move on to the 90-year line and 110-year line, but I don't think they're going to achieve that, so I just stopped the study right there. And that's my flood study. I give you all kinds of numbers, but that's really what it is. So, this sub watershed is not part of the Van Dam Broek watershed, it's its own watershed, it feeds the Paquonic, and if in fact it experienced additional stormwater runoff, it will continue to flood the Paquonic River downstream of Bloomingdale, of where you, where you have your flooding. Does it help the other towns that I serve, Riverdale, Lincoln Park? No, it does not. You know, but I just want you to be aware, we have regulations in place today that are both the state, the county, and Bloomingdale that all require stormwater to be done to the highest standard. That's the best I can achieve. But you're talking about a detention basin of 110,000 cubic feet, or allow them to direct the stormwater into the TILCON basin, which can be controlled as a detention basin for any kind of flooding event. So, that's, that's my report in a nutshell.
I'll ask you to, your name, where you are, or come over here, then we go to questions and answers. I believe the copies were already there, didn't they?
Extra colored copies? A lot of small copies. Small copies.
We will post a small detailed report on Bloomingdale. And here's copies, which I should have had out earlier. So, you guys, before you go and grab them, there's just a few.
Okay.
If anyone wishes to ask a question, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Is counsel on anything with Paul before we begin?
Paul, you stopped at the 70-year mark, is that because of your experience working with the DEP?
Yes.
And where we, we're experiencing that too.
I think you have to respect all the work that was done on the MIR tract to restrict anything in the restricted areas environmentally, so that's why we stopped.
Paul, to your opinion, I think one of the concerns was, if we consider this, it's going to increase flooding to our, you know, to Bloomingdale flats. Are you saying that it's not going to increase flooding? Is that what?
In the flat area, no.
He also said it may impact flooding downstream from us in Riverdale.
If you don't put the detention basin in the US.
Hey, hey, Paul, those detention bases, have they ever failed?
Have detention basins ever failed?
Yeah, have you, instance?
No, because we designed based on 100-year storm plus a factor of safety of 25%. When you get a storm like Hurricane Floyd, for instance, was a storm that exceeded everything that we designed to. We were fortunate with Hurricane Floyd that the reservoirs were low, and we were basically rescued by the reservoir, by DIBO at that point, even though we did see flooding. If we had full reservoirs, we'd still be talking about Hurricane Floyd today. So, have detention basins ever failed? I don't know that they've collapsed in my tenure up in the northern Jersey area because there is a factor of safety on them, but the interesting thing is that if they exceed the storm that the good Lord sends us, then that's considered a failure also.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any member of our audience wishing to ask a question? I'd ask if everyone could just grab your copies at the end of the meeting. If anyone wishes to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Questions of, yes, please, come on up, of Mr. Kushner, Paul, the governing body. Yes.
Hi, I'm Marilyn Giudano on Rafkin Road, 205 Rafkin Road. I guess one of my main concerns is the blasting. One of the concerns, and then the dust, and then if we do have a lot of rain, then what happens? Because I, I lived in Sparta many years ago when we had all that rain and all the damage that it did, when we had that, you know, the act of God, you know, nature, Mother Nature. But why do we want to do this? Like, why do we want to? I guess my question is, how is this going to help the homeowners in Bloomingdale expanding the quarry? I mean, is it supposed to be for tax, to help our taxes? I don't, I honestly don't think it's going to help our taxes because we're in the state county. My little house, if I moved it to Butler, would be about $1,200 to $1,500 cheaper a year. I did my homework on that.
Sure.
And I have my real estate license, so I kind of know a little bit about real estate. But I guess my question is, why would we want to, my main question is, do this?
And again, I stated that a moment ago, number one is to achieve the court order affordable housing that is currently on that site. And this, this conceptual plan could achieve that because the, the idea was, TILCON would donate the 32-acre parcel to the borough, make that site ready relatively quickly, and the borough can then sell that parcel to enable the affordable housing. Because it's a court order, and that's not going away. Whether, if nothing was to occur here, that court order will either be built there or, or somewhere else within town. So, number one is the affordable housing. Number two is, again, why we're exploring and reviewing the concept is to bring the much-needed revenue, to reduce, at the very least stabilize, our residents' taxes. You mentioned, you know, we're very limited as far as potential, you know, we're half, my mantra, half-open space, 80% in the Highlands preservation area, where there's not a lot of options left for Bloomingdale from a revenue standpoint, there just aren't. And costs just rise every year. We're in the budget process now, we're sitting down to, you know, a half, $5 million loss assessed value just based on current market value from appeals, it's a loss of revenue, pension increase, health insurance increase, you know, and the like. This, this past winter was, was 100 grand more than last winter. There has to be something looked at to potentially bring the revenue needed to potentially reduce, if not just stabilize. You mentioned your taxes would be $1,500 less.
Maybe.
Well, no, it's a real number.
Around, around.
But the other point is your sewer and water rates would be half. Because, you know, a lot of us who are unseptic and well don't realize that part of the borough's problem there. We are, because we're 50% open space, we only have 2,200 users sharing the cost of our sewer operation, which is the sole reason why your rates are, are high. And how do we fix that? You add more users by enabling affordable housing, and you look to cell capacity, there's a few ways we can look at that too. But why we're looking at is to solve those problems. Because if, if nothing's done, I'll be this blunt, if nothing is done, and if someone has another idea, because someone coming and beautifying Main Street is increasing our ta, is not increasing our tax base, someone converting a house on Union Ave to a doctor's office is not really increasing our tax base. If someone has an idea that could be done, then share it with me, okay? Because, you know, I scared someone a few meetings ago when I said, you know, I pay, I pay almost $11,000 on my three-bedroom Cape Cod right now. In 10 years, those taxes will be $15,000, $16,000 if there's not some sort of revenue. And we talk about, which is what we're studying, the effect on this conceptual plan on home values, and that's being explored. And I'm, I'm not going to get right now into the, the Richland study that you, you showed because it's really not relative to Bloomingdale, it's 10 years old, there's no comparable matches on housing, and you and I could debate that all day long. But if our tax rate rises at a rate it could, and that's going to directly affect your home values as well, you know, and then people say, well, cut, don't spend as much, you know, please sit in the shoes of any of these council people and prior council people, and they will assure you, there's, there's not a lot of wiggle room in what we spend in Bloomingdale. And, you know, if you're not so engaged as we are, and there's prior council people here who can speak to it, there's not this pot of money that, that's, that's erroneously being spent that could be the reason your taxes are high. It's not, you know, we are, we run a tight ship. We have the amount of police officers we need, we have the amount of DPW workers we need. It's not a matter of, well, get rid of this and get rid of that, and my taxes will stop. We need to explore some ideas, and that's what we're doing.
My concern, another thing, I don't want to take up a lot of time, but my concern is when they blast, my house shakes.
And if, I know, absolutely, mine too.
And I don't, and the fact of the matter is, I don't know what can happen if they expand the quarry. I, you know, I, I don't know, like, where I used to live was quite far from Hercules, but when they, when I lived in Sussex County, you know, years ago when Hercules was still around, when they blasted, our house shook, and our house was a brick, you know, my father built a brick home.
Sure.
So, you know, that's a concern. And then the dust, I, I don't, you know, when you were giving your presentation, you didn't mention about all the, the dust and, and all of that. And the thing of it is... And the thing of it is, the way I feel, I mean, I'm not a rocket scientist by any stretch of the imagination, however, if, okay, so you think that the quarry might, expanding the quarry might help our taxes, but there's always things that they say is going to help our taxes, and then at the end of the day, Atlantic City was supposed to help New Jersey.
Sure.
You know, really, I mean, that's a much bigger picture, but we didn't see any, you know, we didn't see any tax breaks with, I'm just using.
No, no, no.
Comparing apples to oranges.
I appreciate that.
Right now. But there's always a lot of promises, and then if there is problems with the flooding or things happen, guess what? The taxpayer's going to have to pay for that.
Sure. And again, and I respect everything you're saying, no, and that's fine, before you go, I respect everything you're saying, and again, this is why we're exploring it, but I will guarantee you, whether it's this or whatever else is out there, if nothing is done from a revenue standpoint, we're going to be in rough shape.
But being a Realtor, people don't want to live near a quarry. And it's, as it is, the quarry is smaller now. If it was larger, it's going to be.
Okay, but I want.
It's a sore thumb when you, when you, when you go into Bloomingdale, seeing Tilcon there. It is a sore thumb already. I don't know how it's going to.
When you see, what, from 287?
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's the point, you know, as far as the house is rumbling and the dust, and I'm not dismissing that, I mean, I live in Morris Lakes, I'm pretty, I'm really close, and I rumble when they blast, too. But with or without this concept we're talking about, that condition, if it's that alarming, is going to be there for the next 67 years regardless of this. And extending this 20, 30, 40 acres is what's being explored, will that impact be any different? And that's what we're exploring.
The one thing is, the violations, the 75 violations, that's a big red flag for me.
Right. But I think you, I think you need, okay.
That's all I want to say, thank you.
And I'd ask you to research those violations, you know, I mean, it's, you know.
Just ask one more question?
Yes.
You're Realtors.
I don't, I'm not like an active Realtor, my license is like hanging with a referral to real estate.
Show somebody a Cape Cod house in Bloomingdale, tax are $12,000. You're going to show them the same house in Butler. What house they're going to buy if it's, everything is the same? Butler. Am I right?
Well, because it's Morris County and the taxes are higher.
There's other reasons, too, because Butler has a lot of traffic on Route 23, they have more income, Riverdale has the same thing, we have nothing.
I understand that.
You can show a house in Bloomingdale with the same taxes, and we have more to offer in other avenues, right? We have a lot of houses in town that are not.
But to be honest with you, I don't know how a quarry is going to be more to offer. If there was a park, you know, if there was, if there was a park, like a park where kids can go with swings and stuff like that.
The offer is that anytime, and I can tell you from experience, and everybody up here and people in the audience, when they walk to town to get up here, the number one question is asked, what are you going to do about my taxes?
None.
We're trying to do the.
Quality of life.
It's the number one.
It's the number one question.
Because it always comes down to.
The number one question.
No matter what people say, it always comes down to what I have to spend. And nothing frustrates me personally more than every quarter to come up here and give them $3,000. It costs me $1,000 a month to live in this town. That's frustrating to me. It is my choice, I've been here for 57 years.
I've been here for 45.
But again, it's harder for people whose taxes aren't frozen, because, you know, some people qualify to freeze their taxes. So the whole ratable argument isn't, I'll never win that argument with someone whose taxes are frozen where they are, so it's important, too.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to give other.
No, I appreciate, absolutely, thank you. Thank you.
Frank O'Reilly, 21 Pearl Street. I'm here as a private citizen and now as Chair of the Environmental Commission. First question I'd like to ask is, Mr. Kushner, is, do you agree with the Borough Engineer's presentation?
All right. You know, I respect Paul's an engineer, but, you know, he had to base his report on something. What he based it on is that 70-year line. But when I asked Tilcon, well, does that mean you're going to quarry to that line in 70 years? They said, well, it's a concept. We're not really sure. And I, when I said, well, is that the exact place you're going to quarry? They said, well, it's a concept, we're not really sure. So Paul was asked to produce a report based on a quarry that may or may not go where they say they're going to go, and may or may not get there when they say they're going to get there. It's an impossible task for this poor man. What I question, what I question is, and I have to ask you this, Paul, is there anything to prevent them from quarrying this area?
Where are you pointing?
There's no wetlands, there's no buffers.
No, there is not.
So my concern is, if they can't quarry here, are they going to quarry there?
How would they quarry there if they have no access to it?
Put a road right through here.
Not if it crosses the wetlands, they can't, right?
Yeah, actually can, yeah. You can get that kind of dispensation. And I've seen it before. Go over to Butler, it's called, I don't know, it's right on the side of 23 there, they were able to put a road through the wetlands because it was their only access. You can't have a landlocked parcel.
Argon Woods.
Yeah, Argon Woods. So, you know.
But are there mechanisms?
But other than that, than that other parcel, the 70-year line actually stands.
If you can limit them, if you can limit them to that 70-year line.
Well, it's not, it's not the Borough of Bloomingdale limiting them, it's the DEP, it's state regulation.
No, it actually, it actually is, because as I said, there's nothing in the state regulations.
I'm not talking about that parcel, I'm talking about the, what is it, the 90 and 110-year line? That's invading the wet, the stream buffers and.
Right.
And the wetlands buffers. So regardless of what anybody says, regardless of what Tilcon says, they cannot quarry that portion.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make certain of that.
Right. I'd say, that's what I said in my presentation. What I said is, you know, but if they can't quarry there, where are they actually going to quarry? I mean, this is a multi-billion dollar multinational conglomerate. They don't know wetlands are there? Paul knows. I know. Why would they present?
I'm aware of it, and that's why I brought the question up.
Why would they present this to the public in that fashion? Why would you show a 90 and 110-year line when you know you can't quarry there? He knows you can't quarry there. I know you can't quarry there. They don't know you can't quarry there. So as soon as I see that in their presentation, I become suspect, and I have a reason to.
Right. But you, I just, I just feel you always dismiss that it is a conceptual plan. If it go, if this was to go forward, and we have a concrete final product that the governing body was going to actually move on, and that defined that area within a 70-year line, there's mechanisms to put in place for the concern you have in the backyard of the Van Dam homes, there's all mechanisms that could be done to control everything you're concerned about, and that would be when there was a concrete offer or something from the borough, if we were, if we were to move forward. But you just, we're not at the point of, you know, putting anyone under oath and discussing where, that, because it's a conceptual plan, and all that, if it proceeds, will come, will come.
I don't see the harm in raising red flags.
No, 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 they're obvious that, your concerns, and again, there's mechanisms and ways and protections in place that could be done to, but this is why we're here, to educate ourselves and all that, so, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. So essentially, if the borough locked everything down, said that they only can quarry up to the 70-year line, would that make you happy? Would you agree with that, that it's a viable plan?
The only land that's in question then is this, and as I said, the Borough of Bloomingdale, your town, okay, said that that's critically important wildlife habitat.
Who said that? The Borough of Bloomingdale? Right. Various committees got together, laypeople, sat down.
No, not laypeople. Consultants hired by the borough to produce these reports said that it's critically important wildlife habitat. And, you know, why did, why did, why did the Borough of Bloomingdale say that? There has to be a reason. So go back to your own consultants and say, why did we produce a report that says that's critical wildlife habitat?
Okay, the other thing I wanted to address here, a couple of other items, is you were talking about animal habitat. If the quarry were to expand only to the 70-year line.
Right.
I don't see that as being a major impact for animal habitat. You're taking 20, 20 acres away, and you're taking 20 acres.
You're saying that the report that Bloomingdale produced was.
This is my opinion. I'm not saying anything about any report that was reproduced or given out. This is simply my opinion.
Right.
So from my perspective, if only 20 acres were used for the quarry, and that 20 acres happens to be extremely steep, not heavily forested, I believe, and probably not much of an animal habitat, the animals in those 20 acres would be, would migrate to the remaining area, which has the wetlands and the streams, which would probably be beneficial to them. I don't see it a big, being a big problem as far as animal habitat goes.
Are you asking me a question?
Well, I'm making a statement, but I wanted to know if you agree with that.
I actually agree with the report that Bloomingdale produced. So if you can show me, I mean, you have your opinion, maybe you want to produce another report that says that Bloomingdale lied in their report. I mean, if you want to do that, then go ahead and do that. I understand the question.
Well, I just wanted to know if you agreed with my opinion, that's all. I made a statement saying that I didn't think the 20 acres that the quarry wants to take is going to be a major impact to animal habitat on Federal Hill.
The Borough of Bloomingdale showed there's critical wildlife habitat. I would defer.
Okay.
To the Borough of Bloomingdale on that issue.
That's fine. The other thing I wanted to address is part of your presentation that deals with housing prices, okay? If they quarry that other 20 acres, now, my understanding is that that ridge line is not going to get quarried. So you will not be able to see the quarry from the flats, in fact, you won't be able to see the quarry at all from any of Bloomingdale, is that correct? The quarry is on the other side of Federal Hill.
You're saying if they only quarry to the 70-year line?
That is correct. Well, even if they went to the 110-year line, you would not be able to see the quarry from the flats.
I have no idea.
Isn't that the presentation that was given in one of the previous meetings?
Yes, it was.
Were those people under oath? Were they under, I'm asking a serious question.
No, they gave the elevations, and the elevation showed that you would not be able to see the quarry. It's on the other side.
You also showed that they're going to go quarry to that line in 110 years, are they?
That was a concept.
Thank you. The whole thing was a concept. It was a concept proposal. So I don't expect any of that to be to the line accurate. Also, the Richland study had nothing to do with visual presentation of a quarry. It had to do with distance of homes from a quarry. And that effect, that includes blasting, that includes noise, that includes dust, that includes just the idea, if you were buying a home, and you knew the land behind, adjacent to that home were zoned for a quarry, okay? Whether the quarry's there today or not, still, the fact that it's zoned for a quarry would have an impact on your decision to buy that home. I can't see where it wouldn't.
You know, it's funny, and not to interrupt you both, but what's funny is, a few meetings ago, 80 residents in the, in the, in the audience, I asked the question, who bought their house knowing the quarry was already there? And one person raised their hand. I just thought that was interesting.
Right, because it was separated by 180 acres.
Correct, and the ridge lines to make them not visual.
Now it's not going to be, John.
Not everywhere, I'm just saying.
It'd be right in their backyard.
Well, but in the case.
I just thought that was an interesting comment, that's all I'm saying.
Most people, when you look at buying your home, and the audience can bear me out, when you look at buying your home, you look at adjacent properties. You don't look at a property that's half a mile away.
Standard.
Okay? But when this entire 180-acre tract is rezoned for quarry, and that quarry's in your backyard, it's going to affect your home values. How can it not? The woman who sells real estate, are you still here?
I don't want Ross, don't be doing that, please.
I'm just saying.
Well, then, she needs to come back up and you ask her a question.
All right, I disagree with your analysis, and I'll tell you what. First of all, you got a ridge line that's going to separate the flats.
If they quarry where they say they're going to quarry.
If they go to the 70-year, 70-year line and do what they said they're going to do, you're going to have a ridge line between the flats and where the quarry is. You won't see it, you're probably not going to hear it.
I don't think, this guy's funny.
Blast, you, you will feel the blasting, would you feel the blasting now? I don't see a difference in the blasting.
You're the head of the Environmental Commission?
Yeah. I hear, I get, my house rumbles, too.
Hey, guys, there's no reason, we're here, listen.
So I think you're comparing oranges and apples. I think that your study is people who have houses in line of sight of a quarry. And I would agree with you, people in Paltown Lakes who are facing a quarry, the value of their houses will be less because of that. But I don't agree with you that people who are living in the flats, if the quarry were to proceed, are going to see a devaluation in their homes because of the reasons I just gave, because of the ridge line, and I don't think it's going to be an impact on their lives.
Can I ask you a question?
Excuse me, gentlemen, excuse me, both of you.
Thanks.
No, no, we're fine, we want to learn. I want to just make a comment. We applaud when we agree with a position, which is perfectly fine. Please don't be disrespectful when you don't agree with a position. Please. Thank you.
All right, that's all I wanted to say, is I disagree with the, Mr. Kushner's assessment of devaluation because of the reasons that I gave. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make a statement. In 2007, the Bloomingdale Environmental Commission, which he's the head of, sent a letter to the Highlands Council asking them to move all of Federal Hill into the preservation area. If the Highlands Council had done what his commission asked them to, we would not be having this discussion because that quarry could not possibly advance. So I don't understand.
You know, if I may, though, I just, a little history, and many in the room know this, there was absolutely a time and place in Bloomingdale when it was all-out preserve Federal Hill. As a matter of fact, till today, some people, I see emails from yourself and others, preserve Federal Hill. Well, 260 is, 260 is a quarry, 32 is, is affordable housing, so really, the only thing you could preserve is this 143 acres of this potential conservation. So, but to paint a picture of conserve Federal Hill, you know, it's, it's kind of misleading because that ship has sailed, you have the 40, 140 acres that's there now. But there was a time in 2000, 2001, 2002, 2003, when there's an all-out effort. I ran for council to preserve Federal Hill.
Yes, I'm aware of it.
Okay? And the reason being, at that time, we had affordable housing on the Mier tract that has been in front of the planning board for 30 years. Bloomingdale hasn't built a stitch of affordable housing, thus we lost our subsidy certification and were sued by Mier for, i.e. the court order. But prior to that, we had the answer. We were saying, okay, we could fix this, we can move the affordable housing to the horse farm and preserve Federal Hill. That was the mantra at the time, the goal, and that's, that was true. But then, an element of our community and environmentalists fought that, and stopped the development on the horse farm, put that in the Highlands, so now all the pressure is back to where we're talking about, i.e. the court order. I just want to give a little history that, you know, there was a time, and I was, I'm on the record, save Federal Hill, when it was a reality to do so before the court order. But, but the community, and a lot of non-residents fought that and stopped that. So the moral of my story, if the horse farm happened 10 years ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And, yes, sir.
Jeff Gallagher, 11 Brant Lane. First of all, you know, for the line of sight, there's something when people blast called overpressure. And it is a line of sight detonation, and explosive, an explosive expert knows that. And at our house, we put $60,000, we retrofitted our house to take our disabled sister-in-law and everything else.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
The microphone.
We put $60,000 into our house to get our disabled sister-in-law. Disabled sister-in-law, like, the house completely done. And with blasting, depending on where it's facing, because I've had this state there,
our house experiences a 4.7 earthquake on the Richter scale. All right? And to say, no one in Bloomingdale can see the quarry. If I go out and I look over at an angle, I can see the quarry from my house, you know, and
Well, you could see the Bloomingdale Quarry from Brant Lane?
From Brant Lane, when there's nothing open, you know, I go down by the animal shelter.
Yeah.
And you can see quite over, you can see the entrance of the quarry.
Riverdale.
That's the Riverdale Quarry?
Yeah.
Okay, but not, okay. Not the Bloomingdale Quarry?
Okay, no, no, not Bloomingdale. So
And I'm sure the majority of the blasting you're feeling is from the Riverdale Quarry, not the one
It's from both.
I'm sure, but the majority, I said, yeah, thank you.
But the thing is, if this extends just to the 70-year mark, what I'm looking at here is there's got to be a better way for us to make money. And to speak to your point, in Riverdale, I went to a couple of town meetings, Riverdale has the lowest tax rate of anybody. Do you have the first question for everybody is, what are you doing about my taxes? It's not a, it's not because we're high, it's always the first question, it's always on everyone's mind.
Right.
No one wants to pay more taxes, and everybody thinks they're paying too much. You know, if it was $500 a month down in Georgia, people complain about that.
Right, absolutely.
So, that's, you know, what I see is like a mute point that
Well, it's not a mute point because we can't go any higher. And I don't know, many people live in Riverdale who say they have a problem with their taxes, but anyway.
Yeah, it's in the same thing.
Sure.
And everyone always answers.
Right.
Now, just a little bit of college biology, you know. A gentleman there asked like, oh, if you have a rocky cliff face and you blow it up, the stuff, the organisms that live in that will migrate down to the wetlands? You know, and that's just like simple biology. Things that live in rocky outcrops don't migrate down to wetlands, you know. Salamanders live in wetlands, you know. Everything else lives up on rocky outcrops. And the flora and fauna. So, if you lose the one definition, and if you look at this, there are five different characteristics to the lands here, and one of them is the Ridgeway. You know, it's an ecological system. So, I would agree with him, like, the person who said that a lot of research was done, and this is also protected lands. I would like to know what's up there, what lives up there, and it might not be anything grandiose, or if there might be a couple types of trees. Or we might find out the trees provide rain coverage for us. And I've been up in federal land, walking around in Federal Hill, and it's a beautiful area. So, I would think that in, for quarries, every city that's successful, I've never heard of one that said, we made our quarry bigger. You know what I mean? It's commercial, it's a mall, it's getting something on Route 23 frontage, you know what I mean? That's how Riverdale does it, that's how
Sure, correct.
And I don't see how expanding the quarry out to the 70-year mark is going to benefit anything or anybody but the quarry. Because we called the two quarries, and we told them that there's detonation occurring, and it's damaging our house. And what they told us, go to your homeowners. And that's exactly what they do now.
Well, the quarry is going to tell you to call the state. They're not going to tell you to go to your homeowners. The state rep who is there, because I spoke to him, because we had another resident say the same thing, the state rep is there to test and monitor for, within regulations. They're not there to assess your damage. So, you could go to, the idea about the homeowners thing is you go to your homeowners, if you have a valid claimable loss, your homeowners could pay you, and if the homeowner feels they could subjugate against who they feel caused it, that's their opportunity. But that's why you're told that.
Yeah, homeowners are ready, they're looking and they said, well, what's causing all this scraps and everything else? Why'd they come up all of a sudden? I was like, well, we just replaced the wall and the blasting.
Sure.
And they're like, well, insurance, I've not met an insurance company yet that volunteers. If they can blame somebody else, they do it. You know what I mean? So, it's just a fact.
Right, but regardless of the conversation we're having about this conceptual plan, your issues that you're raising tonight will remain for the next 70, 80, 100 years, regardless of this concept. Why? Because you live on Brant Lane, which is within 300 feet of Riverdale's quarry and the other side of the mountain, which is existing, so, yeah.
But the thing is, I'm just looking at this from a Bloomingdale point of view.
Right.
I'm looking at a wider point of view.
Sure.
And if you look at the five ecological zones in this one area, if we want to, like, the low-income housing has to go in. It's court ordered, okay? 360 people, are they going to be on Seward and Water?
Yes, they will.
Okay, so that changed the base from 2,200 to 2,600. So, that's a slight reduction in
Correct.
But I got to think that the council, the mayor, everyone else can come up with a better idea because I just can't foresee a quarry adding any financial benefit to the people of the town. Because, you know, if we have a quarry on Riverdale, we have a quarry over here, and they start to close in, no one's going to want to buy our houses.
Right. Again, just exploring the concept, but if the quarry was to expand 20 acres, the 70-year line, you on Brant Lane aren't going to see it, it's not going to be really any additional impact to what you experienced today. But you keep saying, I don't understand the benefit to the town. One, again, I stated it a few times on the record, was to achieve the affordable housing. But number two was, the borough would acquire the parcel of land to enable the affordable housing, and with the ability to sell that land, there's a real serious revenue opportunity for the borough. Never mind the taxes forevermore and the fees from construction. Talking about the sale of land would, could potentially be enough to eliminate the borough's debt, reduce your taxes 25%. You know, these are things we're exploring. If we had that shot of revenue, it would make a difference. But we're weighing out that with what may make this a concrete plan to make it worthwhile. So, we're not affecting home values, quality of life issues, this is all we're talking about. But I raise it again because you stated it a few times, you don't understand how the borough would benefit.
Yeah, I don't.
But we
You said that now, like, you know
No, I said it a few times tonight, so
You said, we would give up the track of land.
Correct.
I don't understand that, then you would sell it to a commercial property.
To a developer.
Yeah, to a developer, and so
To build the 360 court-ordered units.
Right, and
So, the borough would benefit from the sale plus the growth and taxes and revenues and the like from that. Again, that's the concept here. And you say, and I ask any resident, I'm not being a wise guy, show me the other idea. I've been doing this for a long time, and I think I do it pretty well, I know the borough inside and out. Show me the other idea, because it's not staring in front of me, I don't see it.
Shut down the quarry.
Well, to your point, shut down the quarry. To your point about the other benefit is, to Mr. Kushner's point, the quarry someday will be reclaimed. And that's an absolute great advantage for the borough, now maybe 70, 80, 100 years from now. But that site becomes reclaimed and future growth goes there. That's the standard, you know. Were you at any of the presentations from TILCON?
No.
Showing reclaims, well, it's on our website, just as far as, they showed reclaims in Secaucus, reclaims in Clifton, what becomes of a quarry when it's done.
So, is there any area where the quarry is already done?
I'm sorry?
Is there any area where the quarry is already done?
Any of this area?
And any of, they're feasible that they've already done?
No, they still have 60 years in the active quarry. Still in the active, where they are now. So, like, that's my point, whether, if this deal stops, this concept doesn't go anywhere, Bloomingdale is going to have TILCON as a neighbor for 60 minimum years in the existing quarry.
Maybe.
Maybe. Could be less.
Thank you.
Right, well, yeah. Could be more, could be less, could be more, but nobody's under oath here, so.
I'm just saying, John, we don't, we don't know.
We don't know, we don't know. Could be more than 60.
Hello, everybody, Rob Rex from 66 West Shore Drive. Only one thing that seems really obvious to me is if, I'm glad the expansion isn't as big as you were thinking, but even if you expand, that's going to have more years that the quarry, you know, is working. And if it's not working, then Bloomingdale could have such things as development go on there quicker, and you can have more revenue there quicker. That's one thing. Another point is, is, please, if you are going to sell it to them, let's get as much money as you can out of them. And number two, did I hear that the quarry was willing to develop for the housing development, even if they weren't purchasing the land, just to get the materials off of that site?
No, just so the record's clear, Meere tract is privately owned. Okay, the borough's not selling anything to TILCON. The Meere tract is owned by the Meere family, it's privately owned. They have the rights through the court order to develop those 32 acres. So, that's a private land deal between Meere and TILCON. Now, obviously, TILCON presenting the conceptual plan to the borough because they would need zoning to proceed with the expansion of the quarry. But the land portion, the land acquisition has nothing to do with the borough, that's a private land deal. The borough doesn't own anything here. In that conceptual plan, TILCON would, you know, give deed the 32 acres to the borough, do the site improvement, so then the borough can market that. There's the potential advantage to the borough. As far as if this concept didn't go through, what TILCON would do for that 32 acres, has nothing to do with the borough. You know, if they were to be hired by the Meeres to clear it for development, that's, I can't speak to that. Does that, you understand that?
Yeah, now, I got that.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Good evening, my name is Bob Sherrick, I reside at 4 South Lake, Iosco Road in Bloomingdale. I have two questions. One of the major financial benefits you cite to the community is the, is if TILCON purchased the Meere tract, that TILCON in turn would give the town the 32-acre COA site. What's the estimated fair market value of that to the town if that happened? I'm sure it's just rough estimates at this point. I'm sure that the town at some point would probably get a qualified appraiser
Sure.
to advise it on the value. But I'd just like to get a sense of what the magnitude of that pot of gold
Before I do that, we would, if this was to move forward, we'd have to publicly bid that, you know, because this would be public property. The estimates, again, and these are using comparisons from what the Meeres were marketing it at prior to their conversations with TILCON, and comparisons to Avalon Bay. What Avalon Bay paid per unit, et cetera. The estimates are between $16 to $20 million.
Did Avalon Bay have a COA component?
Yes.
It did, okay. The other question I have, or comment, is I look at the 70-year line. What I'm concerned about is not just how long or how much material that they can mine, it's also the other impacts. We were talking about the vibrations, how frequent, I mean, the basic point I'd like to say is, before the council goes too far in considering anything, that we get a entirely detailed presentation from TILCON on exactly what they are going to do, where the access road is going to be.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's easier for me to accept it if the road is going to continue on Broad Street and Pompton Lakes versus a road that's going to come out by the Burger King on Union Avenue. Are the hours of operation going to remain the same? Or are they going to be 24 hours a day? What's the amount of traffic? Truck traffic that's going to come in and out on a daily basis and at times of day? Those are all impacts that are as important as the amount of material that's mined.
Right.
And I would urge you to insist on that. I mean, are the lines, the mining lines going to stop at Bloomingdale? Or is it going to continue into Wanacue? We don't know, we're just getting little snippets from TILCON. With any large project, you generally get their engineer giving the entire presentation so you know what you're dealing with.
And if I may, you're absolutely right. But that would be if there was an introduction of a zoning ordinance, and during the 35-day review at the planning board, that's when those public hearings occur, and that's when the planning board would require exactly all those things you're referencing.
Why can't you have TILCON give a conceptual presentation even before that, John?
Well, again, we, once the council, I think, the next step for the council is going to, what we're gathering here, the flood study, Mr. Kushner's study, is to make a motion to send this to the planning board for their input. And I'm going to suggest we do that tonight, just send it to them for their review, and the public can have further conversations with the planning board on all these studies and the like. And the planning board can make recommendations to the governing body. I assure you, before there's an introduction, if this was to proceed for a zoning ordinance, there will be concrete everything, concrete boundaries, whether it's deed restrictions on their limitations, the road identified, the hours identified, that would be in front of all of us to see before we went to an introduction or adoption of an ordinance. Right now, we are just learning the concept along with everybody else.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Yes, Tim. Or, actually, Tim, this is Wyman Brock, and then, yes, Laurie, just state your name and address for the record.
Wyman Brock, 45 Highland Road. Why would a developer want to buy the Meere property when the quarry is going to be expanding in that direction? It's, I mean, nobody is buying it to develop it now. Why would a developer want to do that? What I feel, my concept, my conceptual thing in this whole situation, is that we're going to be stuck with the Meere tract, we're going to lose the tax dollars, and nobody's going to buy it. We're going to be stuck with it.
Okay.
I agree with what the woman said about taxes. I've been living here forever. Every crazy idea that comes up is going to lower our taxes, and they're never lowered. They're never going to be lowered, and this is not going to lower our taxes.
I'll address your first, well, you had a few questions. It hasn't been built, why would someone, I believe it hasn't been built to date since 2008, so that's six years, going on seven, partially because the economy wasn't in great shakes, number one. Number two, they were asking a lot of money for it when the site work is intense, absolutely. I believe if they reduced their asking price, you know, they would move this thing in the heartbeat. Why would somebody, why would a developer buy it? It's the only pre-approved project in the Highlands Planning Area, pretty much in the state of New Jersey. A developer would buy this quite quickly.
But it is already approved, and developers are not buying it.
Because the site work, the site work would be done for that developer.
Right, but there would be a quarry closer
There would be a quarry, depending on the 70-year line.
You asked how many people bought property when they knew that it was going, they were going to be near a quarry. Why don't you ask how many people would buy?
Why don't we ask, we could, we should ask the people in the grand, behind the TILCON quarry, you live on Matthews Ave. They're as close as any future development would be here, and those condos sold.
Oh, they did.
You know.
There are a lot of empty ones.
Eventually, they did, it was partly economy-driven.
It's not built out, because they didn't sell.
Right, the economy, the economy had nothing to do with that, Ross?
And the economy is getting so much better? And this whole 70-year thing, there's no guarantee that they're going to even wait 70 years to do anything. The last time I asked them about 70 years, they said they could begin anytime, they could begin tomorrow. There's nothing concrete. Everything is concept, 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 and everything is, go to the planning board, and we will give you concrete information. But how many meetings I have come to, and it's all concept, concept, concept. We have nothing concrete from them, it's all dreams and promises, and that whole, you know, all of these studies that have been done. And then, it's, Ross basically showed that they contradict each other. So, how can we believe these studies, even if you do more studies about flooding, et cetera? How can we believe it? When the same engineering firm has material that is contradictory?
Great questions, and that's why it needs to be in front of the planning board, so they can have that planner.
When does the planning board meet?
Well, there's nothing on the agenda yet, they don't even have it yet, but I'm saying
Can you personally tell me when they meet so I could attend that meeting as well?
Off the top of my head, no, it's
All right, can you announce it?
The third Thursday of the month, you'd have to check the website for their agenda if TILCON is going to be on it. But I will refer to them, ask them to go and buy it to do so, and they will review Mr. Kushner's report, they will have the planner present and ask these questions, and this is what we're doing.
It seems that you're constantly putting us off. People come up here and make wonderful points, and you keep saying, it's still a concept. We're investigating, we're learning, we're not learning, you're arguing
You're the only one in this room arguing. You're the only one here arguing.
I don't think I'm the only one arguing. I think everybody that gets up here, you have an answer for them, that it's a concept, and we're going to just pursue it for a while. But it's going on and on and on, and it's always, and we're not getting anywhere.
We have, we have done quite a bit to engage the public, and we're going to continue to do that. We've had two public hearings. Mr. Kushner asked if he can come, of course he can. Paul, our engineer, this is our job.
I appreciate that they came, both Ross and Paul.
You and I know each other a lot of years, and, you know, you're just dead against this concept, and I appreciate that.
I am, for many reasons.
And that's fine, that's fine, that's fine.
Because of quality of life, because it's
And we're listening, and I understand that, but
And because I don't believe it's going to lower our taxes.
And I
And I think it's going to be terrible for our town, I am, I'm dead set against it.
This is why we're here, to hear all of this.
And a lot of people here have been making good arguments for it.
Right, and I appreciate your comments, absolutely.
Okay, just one other question, I think the last time I meant to get up, but you had closed the meeting. I think Mr. Yazdi talked about working near a quarry and how terrible it was.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
He's terrible working next to a quarry, and you want us to live next to one?
I don't think the word terrible came out of his mouth, but
Answer that?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to point to it and then leave it at that and make your scene, and that's it. Nobody wants a quarry in their backyard. I don't want a quarry in my backyard. Is that our first option? No, but if it's our only option, it's our job to listen. And I get a lot of you don't want it in your backyard, I get that. If I was, if I had a house right on Van Damme, I would be right there and do that.
I don't live on Van Damme, it's not in my backyard, I'm thinking of the town. And another person made that comment as well.
Listen, I work next, I work next to a quarry too.
He's not talking about himself, he's making a broader issue for the town of Bloomingdale, and that's what I'm doing. It's not about It's not about, in my backyard. It's about the town of Bloomingdale, and what's good for it. And people are going to say, I don't want to buy in that town, that's where the big quarry is, that's where all the blasting and all the dust, et cetera is. I don't want to buy in that town. And how, and the prices of homes is going, real estate, you know, you think you're going to make lower taxes, even if you do a tiny bit, but this is how much people are going to lose on their real estate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, if I may?
Yes, please.
I do work next to a quarry, and I do blast once or twice a week, and when they blast, it's scary as hell. I sit on the fifth floor of a building that shakes, right? It's scary. But it's once or twice a week, and I make my living working at that company, and I deal with it. Right? I have a choice. I could leave that job because it's next to a quarry. Same is here, they're going to be here for the next 50 years. If there's a concept that's going to lower my taxes, is it my job to sit here and listen to it, or am I supposed to ignore it because a few residents have something against it? Mr. Kushner himself may have just said it. There was an answer a few years back, but few folks came out and fought that concept, too. So it seems like every concept that comes out, we fight it. Mr. Kushner, were you a part of that coalition that fought that concept as well?
I was part of the coalition that was discussing that concept.
Were you for it or against it?
I was against it in its original form. The mayor and I were discussing it, the Highlands Act came in, okay? Now, I'm being bad-mouthed all over town that I just strung the town along.
But I don't know about all that. Well, my point being, that was the answer.
So you don't want to hear my answer?
But that's the past, we need to worry about the future in this, what we're doing.
Well, if it's the past, we probably should leave it in the past.
Well, the point is, that, listen, nobody wants a quarry, but if it's the only answer, and it's our job to listen to it because we're here to do the best thing for 2,500 homes, not just a few, the 300 you mentioned, then it's our job to listen to it, people. We take our job seriously.
I think we're trying to assess whether it's the right thing for the entire town. I mean, one thing I haven't heard, how many schoolchildren is this 360 units going to put in your school?
I can't do anything about it, it's court-ordered, it's going to happen.
But you can slow it down. And if you accelerate it, make it happen tomorrow, make it happen...
It's not open for discussion.
I guess I'm not allowed to speak, I guess I'm not allowed to... You had, you spoke, you had every opportunity to speak, Ross. I'm not allowed to speak.
Should I go up to the microphone?
No, no, he's engaging you, but don't sit there and say you don't have an opportunity to speak. I gave you the floor for an hour to do your presentation, which I appreciate, but don't sit there and say you don't have the opportunity to speak, that's just disrespectful.
I'm trying to address points that were raised. I thought these people were coming up and going to ask me questions.
And they should. We're not here to talk about how many schoolchildren, because that...
Can you answer your questions?
Mr. Kushner, you're...
Actually, I think there, I think that Mr. Kushner did give an alternative. At the very end of his presentation, he did give an alternative, which you totally ignored.
Shut down the quarry? Was that, I think that's the only alternative he said.
About building on...
Shut down the quarry and reclaim it now and put office buildings in there tomorrow. Yeah.
How do you do that?
Yeah, how do you, yeah, how do you do it?
If the quarry is a problem for the town, why are you extending it for 50 years?
Is it a problem for the town? It's one of our largest current ratables, it's actually a great neighborhood, it's helped the borough many times in its history, so it's not a problem for the town.
How much taxes are you getting from that?
From?
From the quarry.
TILCON right now, quarter million?
$250,000.
Yeah, just on the existing quarry.
If you built that, is industrial, commercial, mall, housing, what would you get from it then?
Sure, but when is that, but they're still quarrying, it's privately-owned quarry.
Right, you're trying to make sure that doesn't happen for 50 years.
Ross, you just said they're a multi-billion-dollar corporation, they're here to make money off the rock. There's a rock in our backyard. They're blasting away at the rock and making millions of dollars off of it. They're not going to just give it to us or sell it to us, and if they were to sell it to us, it's going to raise our taxes again.
He just told me they're going to give you land worth $20 million.
He's referring to the existing quarry. TILCON's just going to pack their bags and say, here, Bloomingdale, take the existing quarry to build your office buildings.
Do you really think they're going to give you land worth $20 million unless they're going to make $100 million somewhere else on that track?
But, see, you're not, it has nothing to do with your statements. Your solution is, don't do, don't even listen to this, right? Don't listen to engineers, because the rocks fall off the, you know, don't listen to anyone, only listen to Ross Kushner, because Ross Kushner is giving a presentation, right?
My entire presentation was based on your...
Listen, I appreciated everything up until you started to put down engineers and not listening to engineers. You lost me there, right? How do we move forward as a town? But your solution was, go buy the quarry as it exists today. With whose money?
I think you have to look at that is your developable land, 260 acres of it.
Correct.
Certainly is.
Not environmentally sensitive. To develop it would improve your town.
Correct.
This concept is to destroy an environmentally sensitive area, and in my opinion, weaken your town. And the end result of it will be to accelerate the creation of 360 units, which is probably going to put another 100 kids in your school system, which is going to cause you to hire five more schoolteachers at $80,000 apiece, which is going to cost the town $400,000, not to mention, not to mention the loss...
You're costing us money. See, you're scaring people by saying 100 kids.
I'm speaking the truth.
174 units went in, you know how many kids came in?
No.
10.
Okay.
Okay, it's not 100. 360 units is double that.
So this would be 20.
All right.
But wait, wait, let's, please, let's get back to giving the opportunity to the public to ask questions, but it's a court-ordered project, so those issues are, you know, inevitable.
We're not here to discuss that, and they're going to be here for the next 50...
Mr. Trainer, you had a question, Mr. Tim?
Ray, all I can say is to you, I enjoyed...
Well, no, a comment, please.
I did enjoy, I did enjoy your presentation up until...
Gentlemen, gentlemen, Mr. Trainer would like the microphone, so Tim, come on up. Just state your name and address for the record, Tim Trainer, Highland Road.
Hi, I see a lot of people, I'm seeing them walk.
Just take the mic out, you're good. You're not spinning anything.
The stand is broken.
So you can hear me now, right? Heard you before.
Hi, Timothy Trainer, 28 Highland Road, Morse Lakes. I just have to start with this because it's incumbent in so many ways. I've been kind of disappeared for five years, had some rough times. The other part of my heart, love of my life, Roseanne, for those who know, she's passed a year and a half ago, and so, oh, by the way, she did happen to be my wife for 43 years, but I only bring that up because my outlook on life has changed so much. We moved here in 1977. I was 24 years old, so, see, that makes me, what, 29 now, I think? Actually, I'm 51, 59, 58, 59, 50, 10, 51. So, one of my issues in listening tonight, first of all, Ross, I just have to thank you for dozens of years of doing a fantastic job and presenting as many factual bits as you do. Some of my concerns have to do, I'm probably known for being a tree hugger, and I think they called me a hugger, maybe I heard that wrong, but in being against things, I really don't think I have. Mr. Mayor, you mentioned, may I call you Jonathan?
Please.
Thank you. You mentioned that there have been no ideas. For those who don't know, I served under council back in the mid to late 80s, and we were a very environmentally, strongly favored environmental group at that time. And so a lot of things we're talking about kind of coming full circle now. Looking back at, I remember over many years, even though I have this, people feel the way they feel about me, I remember making presentations even to, in the 80s, in the 90s, even probably six or seven years ago, on ideas that were well-received by folks here, that had to do with along Union Avenue, some commercial development. That idea was talked about, people said, what a wonderful, wonderful idea. It didn't get done, instead, some folks from Wanacue heard it up in Haskell, and they built what we talked about up there. The horse farm and things like that, yes, we, people do fight against these things, but because there's a fight constantly about money coming in and doing things that will really ruin the character of a town. I know that there's a conundrum, Jonathan. We don't have enough money, and we don't really have a commercial base. I get that part. But is it really, is this really the only thing we can possibly do, is to come up and let this, you know, happen here? The problem is, the irony of taking something that's so special and literally blowing it up and then using it to pave over even more impervious surfaces around New Jersey, I mean, the irony is dripping with irony. And it's really a shame. I don't know if anyone remembers, have been around, remember the cliff in Clifton? Anyone remember the cliff, as you drove towards Clifton, that beautiful sheer face cliff?
Yeah, Gower Mountain is like the Indian head, yeah.
A beautiful, well, there was a quarry there, and they got permission to blow that up and knock it down. The problem with things like this, it's forever.
Right.
Okay? Main Street, maybe someday will be raised and raised with a Z and raised with an S, and maybe that could be something everyone could look forward to. But once we blow up and move away this type of land, it's gone forever. And I think that's what you're hearing people say. We know there are other things that can be done, and I think the commercial development, if we had talked about it for the horse farm even, if we had talked about it for where we have the apartments now, those ideas, even for folks that are considered anti-development, as I know people probably think that about me, and I'm not, probably would have been welcomed, or that discussion would have been had. So, and I also think the idea that this is a concept, everyone sees me come up here, I don't think anyone thinks I'm up here to say, I think we should go ahead and blow up Federal Hill or parts of thereof. And as I listen to the comments from the dais, I think, yes, it's at the concept stage, but there seems to be almost a groundswell of support at this point to, hey, let's see, let's try to move this thing along. I'm glad you take your job seriously, people elect you to do that, whether they agree with you or not. So, I wish I had been more better-prepared, but my life is such that I'm just not. So I, again, thank folks like Ross who present this kind of information to us. I think that, I just want to leave with saying, blowing up literally environmentally-sensitive lands is forever, they can never be replaced. There are some things that have been presented that have been shot down over the years, so it's not like there have been no ideas. Those opportunities are still available, and they're not on the table today, but they're not because our town doesn't put out that kind of welcome mat for that. And so the conundrum is going to continue, because if we are a residentially-focused community, and if we want people to come to Bloomingdale and buy homes and stay in Bloomingdale, and we continue to take away the residential character without having these other things that are going to solve this tax issue, taxes will continue to go up, and the only reason even to come to Bloomingdale will erode more and more and more. And I think you just, this idea is only going to make it worse and worse, not better and better. And I just urge you to do your real due diligence and try to look down 40, 50, 60 years from now, and not let Federal Hill become the ghost that was once the cliff in Clifton. Thank you, thank you.
John? From, what I gather from what you're saying is, you're getting the impression that the folks up here on the dais are in favor of this, is basically what you're saying. Let me assure you, I live in the flats. I said, and I will say again, that I take this very seriously. I said, and I will, and I continue to look at every single piece of paper that is brought before me. I am being proactive into making a decision to what I think is right for the borough of Bloomingdale. That decision affects me. I live there. So I want to assure everyone here, this is not being taken lightly, and I will speak for myself alone, I have not made a decision. This is not something that I said I was going to be in favor of. I said, I never once said, I'm in favor of this and I'm not in favor of this. I'll make a decision when I have every single thing in front of me. So for those who are under the impression that all of us up here are in favor of it and we're pushing to get this done, that's not correct.
Well, no, and that's a great, great point Councilwoman raises, because if we were pushing to get this done, all we'd have to do is introduce a zoning ordinance, 35 days later, adopt it. This public process is by choice of the governing body. We do not have to be doing this, but I'd have it no other way. To your point earlier, horse farm, Avalon Bay, you just left out the Mount Laurel component. Those would have been lovely commercial opportunities, but we can't dismiss the Mount Laurel component that exists in Bloomingdale, that has been ignored for 30-some odd years. To your other point about your suggestions on zoning, Union Ave has been rezoned to commercial. A lot of the recommendations you made about six, seven years ago, those recommendations have been made. You also made recommendations on how to achieve on Mount Laurel on Main Street. Those are also part of our master plan, but COA's in kind of flux where we don't even have our third-round certification numbers yet, so what you did present was not blown off. The zoning, the ideas, I remember you sitting with the former administrator for quite a lengthy time, and I believe, I sat in an audience, or I was still on the council when you presented some of your ideas, Union Ave has been rezoned, it's just whether it's going to be private money to make it happen hasn't occurred. If there was enough revenue, public money possibly could, but we're not at that point yet. Sir, I'm just going to allow other people to have spoken, please, yeah.
What's the affordable?
Affordable housing. By law, you have to build so many, that's a big, it's a big component of everything we're talking about here, so. Yep, Mr. Dale, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Lenny Dale, Reeve Avenue. Where's the Mear tract going to be, is that off Van Damme?
The Mear tract is, well, it's 180 acres that are approximately behind DPW all the way down to almost the animal shelter.
Okay.
But the development proposed is pretty much behind DPW, you are.
The point is that the property that's there, if it's used as it is without letting TILCON do their job, take that stone out of there. All that water that would come out of there would go into the flats, which would cause more flooding going on down in the flats than there's ever been. So this way here, if you allow TILCON to do it, they have to take all that out of there. So it may be 60 years from now, but that's the only way that you should do it. Allowing them to take that property and do that out and flatten it out and still leave the...
The ridge lines.
Yeah, the back thing there, for that to happen. And let me say something about what he just said. He said 60 years ago. Well, right now, if you go down and look where he's talking about, I worked there 60 years ago. Right now, it's nothing but big buildings for the college that's here, which is Montclair College. All that, where it was blasted away, there it is 60 years later. It's all beautiful, a lot of money for the town or the county or whatever it wants to be. So it's going to take time to do it. It isn't going to happen tomorrow, nothing happens tomorrow. When we come to this country here, how many years ago was that? So long ago. That's the same thing as going to happen here. And it's the only way that we can get money for the town to do what you've been saying all night here, is to bring our taxes down or stop them from escalating to the top. It sounds bad, I know you're going to hear banging and things like that from the thing, but if you think that a thunderstorm is just as bad as that, in fact, your kids will jump up out of the bed and come run into your room because of that. This is going to be done at 12 o'clock, you hear a bang, and that's in seconds that it's over with. Sure, it's not bang, and you can, it's going to be hard, but you've got to realize in life, there's so many things that you have to put up with to get the right things to go along. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Actually, whomever, everyone has the opportunity. Yes, please.
Michael Wyble, representing 22 Hamilton Street.
Yes. I'm sorry, 22 Hamilton?
Hamilton.
Hamilton, yes.
What is the annual budget as of last year?
The annual budget?
Yeah.
The municipal budget?
Yes. Yes.
$10 million? What, you have $10 million?
$10 million. So, if you receive that land and you sell it for 16 to 20, could be more or less, you will cover the budget for approximately two years.
Well, that would mean if we gave everyone free taxes for a year, yeah, but that's not going to happen.
I'm saying the discount over the long term, okay, would be added up to saving everyone their taxes for two years, over long term. That makes sense, correct?
Yeah, it's, if you took the sale price, use it to pay down debt, make an investment on Main Street, the fees investment, I mean, it's hard to determine. We, we're not at that stage yet, but roughly, you know, it could be a 25 to 30 percent, you know, tax reduction for, you know, forevermore, but...
Well, not forever, for only a certain amount of time, because this is a one-time kick, because this is a one-time payment.
But the development's not. Enabling the development is a new ratable of 2 million taxes times forever plus increases with assessed value, you know, so.
Okay, yeah, you get money as you did from, you know, Avalon Bay, you know, however much you got from that. I understand this might be a bigger, you know, more houses, right? But at long term, he also mentioned there's schools, there's other costs that I'm involved with, the roads, you know, policing.
But that can happen with or without what we're talking about. That's a court order development, so I'm sorry to interrupt you. If that, and the floor is yours in a moment, if that development happened without what we're talking about, the impact would be potentially a lot greater than what we're talking about here, so I'm sorry.
No, I understand, yeah. You're getting this one-time bonus, which is good for the town. If you do not, you know, authorize this ordinance, pass this ordinance, of course, it may bring it up in two years, but if you say now, "We're not going to pass it," and of course, Mere Corporation might not sell it immediately, you know, because you say no, even though they want to sell land, two years they bring it up and you say no again, and if they get that through, that you are not going to pass this ordinance, they will sell that 32 lot for less money, okay? Of course, they want to sell all of it right now to get rid of all that taxes.
Sure.
They want it all too, but if you hold off, you know, eventually they will sell that, you know, that lot. Maybe not, maybe so, but if you put it down that, "We're not going to pass this ordinance," it will not be passed. For them, the best option would be to sell what they could and keep the rest until they could sell that possibly in the future.
Well, what would happen if the ordinance didn't move forward? And we'll see what happens, is you're right, the TILCON-Mere conversation would be over and Mere would go back to aggressively marketing that 32 acres for development, or actually 180 with 32 to be developed, so.
So, that could also be developed in a different way.
Not, no, the court...
I know the zoning is for other...
It's court order, affordable housing, so there's no other way.
I'm saying the other land, you know, who knows in the future, they could sell that to someone else, you know?
Sure, but they're, part of the court order, well, part of the local planning board attached to that court order was an ordinance that said 32 acres developed, 143 conservation easement. So, they'd have an uphill battle to probably get that removed.
I think his point is, this goes to the Mere subject, you're still going to go through this, because right now, it's... It's still not going to come back to us.
No, they're court ordered, no, they'll pull permits and build.
They're getting 32 acres of the rest of it.
Oh, right, well, that's currently constant.
They can sell the rest of it, we know the 32 acres is going to be developed over the other event.
They would have to get the ordinance changed for the conservation easement to be removed to try to develop the other 140 acres.
That's one factor, but my main point, just to be brief, is that that can be sold a different way. Obviously, the town would not get that benefit from 16 to 20 million dollars.
Correct.
But that's going to be one time. You can't add it to the budget because that's not going to last forever. It's not going to be...
No, it wouldn't be added to the budget. It would be used to reduce debt and build surplus.
Yeah, reduce debt for however long, though it's not going to be for around 50 years. I mean, it's a substantial amount, but that's still, it's not going to be forever. And also taxes, you know, a lot of investments have been into the town, new fire hall, you know, a couple of other new buildings, so of course, there's always maintenance, but so things are going down, there's been a lot of expenses that, you know, aren't always going to continue, you know? Town buildings, you're not building them every 10, 20 years.
True, but most, well, raise our budget chair. I mean, you really, come to our budget hearings and really understand the budget, yeah.
Nothing's going to go down, all right? Been a fire department a long time. You have a ladder truck that's going to be due in about 10 years, a million dollars. Nothing goes down.
I'm not saying about that.
Have to make those investments to keep your town going in the right direction in that course of mine.
But that's been going on for however long this town's been around. Fire truck, I'm talking with the fire, fire building, you know, other buildings that have been renovated, police station, so just a simple point, but...
But a million dollars, one month?
But the town's been living how it has, residential based for a long time, and...
And taxes have doubled in 18 years.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that's because expenses went up, I mean...
Exactly.
Well, people have to manage the town, not, because you guys haven't all been here a long, some of you have been here a long time, but...
But that's why...
Always other option, not the first one who comes in to go, "Oh, we'll give you this land," you know? It's a good deal, but you have to overwatch the long, long term.
Sure.
And what the people of the town who live here want, so that's...
Absolutely. And, you know, as you mentioned, it was suggested at another meeting about putting it out to referendum and get the public input, which the attorney said, "You really can't do that for zoning." But, and I have no disrespect to the people in this room, this is such a small taste of our 7,600 residents, so it would be interesting, if we put it out to referendum and it passed 2 to 1, you know, the element, the group in this room would just, wouldn't change their minds, I mean, it would still be as vehemently against it. The, you know, I speak to a lot of people every day and, you know, and of course, now we're going to get eye-rolling and mumbles and grumbles. I talk to a lot of people who think it's a great idea. So, you know, it's just, they're just, they're not a vocal majority when I think we have a very vocal, you know, minority, so, but I don't know, this is what we're exploring, so. Yeah, thanks so much. Yes, sir. Good night, Tim.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Steve Gerber, 3 Shore Road, Bloomingdale. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for allowing an open audience on this. It strikes me in listening to this that there are several different drivers at play that I think you identified there. One of which is the borough's fiscal situation, the second of which is what a quick shot of large amounts of cash could do to help remedy that fiscal situation, short term and long term. The third is the fact that TILCON exists there and will continue to have the right to exist on a portion of this property for long before I will be here, probably even many of you.
Right.
Hopefully longer. And then the Mount Laurel for the Coalition. In that regard, indeed, the state, I think, and perhaps you can comment, or perhaps the council can comment to the public, has been in a state of flux for about eight years. The court recently, the Supreme Court recently said that we have to recertify or permit a third round. Nobody knows quite what's going to happen with that.
Correct.
The seven judges on the court, I think five of whom who went that way, certainly don't know what's going to happen to that.
Correct.
The legislature and the governor are in disagreement. Many municipal and county leaders are in disagreement.
True.
What is clear is under COA that the courts have never compelled deconstruction by a municipality of affordable housing. So, therefore, right now, this is private land, as the gentleman before me said. If Mere's were to develop it under the court order, and I would ask perhaps the mayor and council if they could publish the full context of Judge Brogan's decision, not just his order...
On the original 2008?
Yes.
Yeah, Jane, the original, it's probably on, is it on?
As well as his recent order that on your...
That's fine, yeah, we can do that.
Because as, I do think, and perhaps you can comment, it's an order that basically prohibits development other than for up to X unit of affordable housing with some mix. I assume some market rates, some low and some moderate.
Correct.
Which the court may modify still.
Mm-hmm.
As it has in a number of COA projects around the state where it's supposed to be 20 percent and they've reduced it.
Correct.
They could further reduce the amount of the size. So, I think that that's an imponderable that the borough's governing body is facing. And I don't think that anybody or any lawyer who practices in that area can exactly predict what the courts and the legislature are going to do about affordable housing obligations, whether by existing trial court order, I don't know whether the appellate division reached that, or Supreme Court mandating judges to step into the shoes of COA, or a legislature overriding a governor's veto. So, my real question is to you all, is to the extent that this decision is being driven by COA, are you being driven by something that could change in significant and currently unknowable ways a year from now, two years from now, three years from now? And then my other general comment is, without regard to the efficacy of the principle of affordable housing, or to those who disagree with the efficacy of that principle, it does seem enshrined in the courts of the state. It probably will not change, but there have been many, many communities which have had designated lots designated for affordable housing, either under COA-certified plans under court orders, which have never had those built. And the court can mandate that it be zoned for it to create a reasonable opportunity for it. But unless somebody comes in to build it, it will not be built. So, I just suggest that that's a very difficult thing as you're weighing all these other issues for the governing body and the planning board to evaluate. And I would just hope that the information that's solicited is from the very best folks who might do so, even if it requires asking the opinions of others who are Mount Laurel experts, be they at the state largest firms or otherwise. And I'm not saying Mr. Simra's office doesn't have that experience.
Right. No, and before you go, thank you. You raised great points, you know, but I would be, I'm quite confident that the court order is never going to go away. I mean, we can gamble all day what's going to happen and no one has the tea leaves or the crystal ball, but...
It's a trial court order, isn't it, Matt?
Um, yes, it is, I believe, yes. But I...
With all due respect to Judge Brogan.
Correct. So, it's a court order nonetheless that could also, those rights and order could be sold for another parcel. You know, you said in other towns, parcels sit as Mount Laurel sites and never get developed. The difference in Bloomingdale is every site that was designated as a Mount Laurel site has been sold as open space. So, that didn't sit quite well upon Mount Laurel, the Supreme Court, or the Superior Court when all this came in.
And I recognize as somebody who at one time represented a municipality that went through two rounds of certification not far from Clifton, that it's a difficult process. And not having a quote "certified plan" creates further exposure to builders' remedy suits and...
Well, that's our situation, correct.
Right now, you have a court order saying, "Build it here," that's the substantive equivalent, I would suggest, of a certified plan.
Right.
At least until the seven members of the Supreme Court say otherwise.
But as of today, we're not certified.
But nobody is certified.
But no, there's no one to tell us whether we are or they aren't, right?
There's no governing body appointed by the governor which can certify a plan right now.
And the Mount Laurel is a component of what we're talking about here. You know, there's all, you mentioned four, and this is one big part of it.
And I'm not suggesting that the other four may not carry the day.
Right.
I'm just questioning whether or not the Mount Laurel component should carry as much weight in the governing body's decisions, perhaps all of us who are, many, many folks are scared about Mount Laurel, and understandably so.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Elliot Ruga, New Jersey Highlands Coalition, and we sent a letter to the mayor and borough council today. I'd like to read it into the record as a public comment on the matter that's up for discussion presently. Dear Mayor and Borough Council Members, the challenges to municipalities in New Jersey today are great. Unprecedented pressures are put on decision-makers struggling to maintain the quality and level of municipal services for their residents. We are gravely concerned that under pressure of such circumstances, municipal leaders would contemplate as a solution to short-term fiscal troubles accommodations of land uses that irreversibly destroy the natural resources that provide the most valuable ecological services to the community and the long-term economic stability of the community and the region. We are even more troubled when such measures completely reverse a municipality's well-documented understanding of the valuable services provided by these natural resources within its borders and had developed an ethos promoting their protection. Sadly, this appears to be the case with the recent effort in Bloomingdale to adopt an overlay zone for the undeveloped and unprotected Meere tract on Federal Hill, abandoning the community's longstanding support for its preservation in order to accommodate the interests of TILCON and expand its quarrying operation. The average citizen may not readily discern the value of the ecological services provided in the forests, soils, wetlands, and other natural resources of Federal Hill in its current undisturbed condition. But as municipal elected officials, you had commissioned natural resource inventories and measured their values and calculated the risks if Federal Hill were further developed. You adopted the findings of these investigations as policies to guide land use decisions in Bloomingdale. Official recognition of the values of Federal Hill was evidenced back in 1989 when Bloomingdale petitioned the State Planning Commission to redesignate Federal Hill on the state plan policy map from Planning Area 2, suburban, to Planning Area 5, environmentally sensitive. This recognition was expanded upon further and mapped and evaluated in the continuing planning processes of the borough and in submissions to the Paseo County Office of Planning and to the New Jersey Highlands Council. Then, in 2014, with the adoption of a periodic reexamination of the master plan, the preservation of the Meere tract was claimed to be not feasible. This claim became the basis for a proposed quarry overlay zone that would allow TILCON to expand its quarrying operation into lands for which, for the past 25 years, Bloomingdale built a case against development and called for its preservation. The New Jersey Highlands Coalition represents the common interests of our 80-member organizations in advocating for the protection of the natural and cultural resources of the New Jersey Highlands. We are deeply concerned and troubled by your abrupt change of course and the threat this change presents to a unique natural area of the Highlands. Although the reexamination document responds to criteria set forth in the municipal land use law, the responses are perfunctory. The reexamination document fails to consider the resources at risk and the impacts and potential costs if quarrying were allowed on the Meere tract. By ignoring the borough's cumulative research over 25 years in understanding the resource values of Federal Hill, the reexamination fails to make an honest cost-benefit analysis of the proposed zoning change. Without a complete and faithful accounting of the resources at risk, the extent of potential adverse impacts, and the value of lost services to compare against a realistic projection of revenues generated from the proposed new land use, we caution the borough and its residents and urge you not to move forward with this plan. The pressures on you to respond to today's fiscal challenges are indeed great. We have no doubt that your interests are in the best interests of those who elected you, but please do not act in haste that is, in the haste that is clearly in evidence. There is too much at stake. Sincerely, Elliot Ruga, New Jersey Highlands Coalition.
Thank you.
If I may, because honestly, I have to use the restroom. And by show of hands, who would like to still speak publicly? Two? Okay. Do you mind if we take a five-minute recess? Or, I don't want to show disrespect, if you come up and I step off, but I'll be back as quickly as I can. Which would you prefer?
Okay.
Okay? So, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and I assure you it'll be five minutes. We'll be back at 10 o'clock with a three-hour agenda ahead of us. I'm ready. Okay, we'll resume at 10:08 PM. Anyone wishing to speak, please come on up, state your name and address for the record, please.
How you doing, everybody? Paul Vogel, 264 Union Ave. You know, some of yous know me, some of yous don't, you know? I believe these guys know who I am. You know, I just want to tell yous all, I'm all for growth, you know, and development, but there should be some boundaries. You know, they got like 60 years, they said, is it 60 years more?
In the existing is...
Existence, so why don't we wait 60 years and then we'll talk about it? I'll tell you what, 25 years and then we'll talk about it. Would that be a good idea? Right? That would be the perfect idea. Jump at the pool of water that you don't know what's in the bottom of it. Serious. Why don't we wait 20 years and see what the... You know, it's not about the money in the pocket, it's about these, taking care of these people that vote and stuff for yous.
Sure, sure.
What I mean? They got 60 years, we'll give them 20 years and then we'll talk about it.
Well, you have a, well, it sounds great, but you have a private landowner who's not going to wait and will develop it, so, yeah. So, again, we're going to explore it.
Well, that's what I got to say, you know?
I appreciate that.
If you want to think about it, that'd be great, you know?
Your taxes are high, aren't they?
I don't pay taxes, landlord does. I pay him the money, he pays it.
Okay.
But I got a great deal of rent, you know, so I've got to be there.
Keep that to yourself, right?
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please? You always wait to go last.
I want to make sure all my questions are unanswered.
I got you, okay, okay.
And DeHuntley, 86 Van Dam. Okay, I'm just going to read you what I wrote, so I want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Sure.
Okay, I've sat in this council chamber and listened to a good deal of information and potential... that potential for Tilcon to expand its quarrying operation into a portion of the Federal Hill Meere Tract in Bloomingdale. Twice Tilcon made a close defense of those self-promoting presentations, and on numerous occasions, residents stood up to ask questions and to speak of their concerns. These concerns were first articulated in the fall of last year. And while not every question could be answered immediately or even every concern addressed, the governing body assured us that you weren't here to listen and to learn. You told us you had an open mind and were gathering information in the hopes of making the best decision for Bloomingdale. You are learning, just as we are. While I sincerely hope that there was no preconceived agenda, I was somewhat skeptical, given the fact that Tilcon paid for the master plan revaluation that recommended the quarry overlay. I therefore sent an open request for any emails related to the governing body's interactions with Tilcon on this proposal. Well, lo and behold, I was presented with 110 emails dated back to July 2013. Now, if I recall, last September 2014, everybody didn't know anything.
That's not true. We did a public resolution.
I asked a question as to what the council was going to do, and they had to learn. They didn't know. I have emails saying you damn well did know. Because some of the emails were simple requests from council members to attend meetings at Tilcon's office in Pompton Lakes or at Borough Hall. Others are questions to the borough attorney, as to others reflect on how the mayor should counter environmental concerns brought up by the Quonic River Coalition and concerned citizens. Clearly, the tenure of the emails is that a mayor and his council members laying the groundwork to execute a plan. Now, I realize not all of you sitting up here on the dais tonight were on the council in 2013, but some of you are. And it is clear from the emails the extent to which you are informed of each step that has resulted in what we have today. Now, I have a couple of questions related to these emails that I had gotten copies of. But first, I want to ask you, how each of you are going to assure the residents of Bloomingdale that you are in effect open-minded and that whether or not quarrying should be expanded in Bloomingdale? How can you assure us of that if you've been discussing this since 2013? I'll start with you, Mayor.
Sure. Well, it's clearly been on the record in 2013. No one said it wasn't. We did a public resolution, six oh vote in 2013, that the governing body would entertain the concept. And that's what's been occurring since then, to the point, to the first meeting of Tilcon presenting it to the public and to where we are today. So, don't you imply that anyone ever said we didn't know anything about it?
That's what you said.
It's impossible I said that, because in 2013, there was a public resolution by those who were here at the time, were myself, Councilman Yasdi, I believe.
Demoto.
Demoto. And that was it, right?
Right.
No, no, no. Oh, Short, Son de Mar, Del Ripa, Shortman, and Mark Conklin, right. Six oh vote to entertain the concept. So, that was...
But then you also said in September of 2014, which is very strange that that tape was not on the website, but anyway, that you, when I asked each and every one of the members of the council, what was their opinion? Were they going to vote for the quarry? And only a few of you, well, some of you weren't in a party to the emails, so I can't say anything about that, but three of you were party to all of these emails. And you said, you're still learning. You don't know enough. Well, I had emails in 2014 that you had a plan. I mean, come on!
I have a report here. It's right on the website, July of 2013, that was reported on the Tilcon.
But I have a report that you have. I have your emails.
And the mayor spoke to it.
I have emails where you stated you knew exactly what you were going to do. I mean, specifically.
And I would tell you the same thing tonight. I'm still learning. I'm listening to Les Kushner. So, nothing's changed.
Okay. Then why did the mayor state on numerous occasions, and you three were not on this email, that there was no deal between town and Tilcon, yet in August 20 of 2013, there's an email that states, "Our deal must be put in place. If we cannot sell our terms," which you all just already had your terms?
No, the terms of acquiring the land, having them site-clear it, couple lots on Van Damme, those are the terms.
What lots of Van Damme are you planning on acquiring?
Well, there's two lots on Van Damme that we would like to take borough possessions just to shore off any potential access, because if the borough, if the residents were ever concerned that they would access Van Damme, which Tilcon will not, I don't know. There's two on, there's two on Van Damme.
Don't know?
The one...
That's like the concept statement, the concept we have here. You don't know?
I don't know the lot and block. There's only two. There's two, there's two lots that can access Federal Hill that I believe the borough should acquire to write off the fact that Tilcon could ever access those points, the acquiring, the 32 acres. Those are the terms that we've been discussing on what we would bring forward. And that's exactly what we disclosed publicly numerous times.
What's the land swap that you're planning?
Land swap?
Yeah.
What?
That was also in October 20 of 2013.
I'd have to see the context of the email. The land swap of us acquiring...
You don't think you know what email I'm talking about, because you had to give the emails out to me.
Of us acquiring the land? The only land deal would be us acquiring the 32 acres.
We need to memorialize our terms. So, tax is about $400,000, not less, which I thought the tax assessors set the taxes. They must give us two lots on Van Damme. They must acquire mine their 40 developmental acres as soon as possible so we can sell it. This was promised by George, though we didn't speak about it today. Move emergency road maybe to John D. Idear of tying it to the condo project road. Set price on land swap. Ray, John, anything else?
And what was your last comment?
Ray, John, anything else? What else?
Yeah. Those are the things we've talked about publicly. Land swap would be the acquiring of the 32 acres, of us getting that land.
What were you swapping it for? Zoning?
No.
What were you swapping it for?
I can't speak to the word swap. The only land deal here is us acquiring the acre with the affordable housing.
I mean, gee.
What's the date on the email?
August 20 of 2013.
Okay. A year and a half ago.
And you also had to give this to me only a couple weeks ago, so you know very well what these emails are.
I didn't give those to you. Jane, Jane has our webmaster run the emails, and that's what you got.
And you don't know about what emails you wrote? You don't know anything about...
Jane, did I have anything to do with it?
On the land swap?
Jane, did I have anything to do establishing the emails that were given to...
From the server and the webmaster.
Jane got them from the server, from the webmaster.
And you don't know what emails you sent? You don't know anything about a land swap?
I send probably 200 emails a day. The land swap, the only land component is us acquiring the land on Meere.
That's not a swap.
But that's the only land we could be, we could be talking about.
They're giving to you.
Anything else?
You also said that there was no information about the Tilcon negotiations, but yet it was redacted. Why was it redacted? If it's attorney-client information...
I don't know what portion. We'd have to ask our attorney, which I don't think you were part of the review, so...
On March 17, 2014.
We can ask Mr. Semra when he's here next meeting, what was redacted in that. He's deliberately not here, knowing you were going to ask that question.
In July 2013, you stated in an email that you would not have Highlands Conformance Plan adopted, as it would hinder the Tilcon Meere deal with borough.
Correct. Absolutely, absolutely.
Invaded us from having the property preserved.
No, no, that's...
Yes.
No. We chose, when this concept came forward, not to adopt the Highland, to be in the Highlands Planning Area Conformance until this concept was discussed and moving forward. Because if we had, then there would be no opportunity to discuss this concept. So, that's just, that's just good business.
Didn't you say before that you got the money from the Highlands to do the plan conformance, but you're not doing it and you're holding on?
No, to do the, to do the present, no. What I stated before was we got money to do preservation conformance. I have no intention of opting in to the planning area of the Highlands until we know this concept is moving or not.
If Tilcon taxes were supposed to be $400,000 based upon your determination, I guess you're a tax assessor now as well as full-time mayor, how come you would consider reducing their taxes and increasing their license fee? What was your rationale behind that one?
The currently...
This is funny at all, Ray. I'm glad you think it's funny. I don't.
Is this a court order?
Well, I'm willing to answer any question I can.
You have a problem answering for what you've been talking about? Kind of a councilman are you?
Oh, gosh. Remember the days the council didn't engage with anyone?
Yeah, except the councilmen, people that got up and started screaming and yelling. Go ahead.
What was your question?
About the $400,000 licensing.
Right. Current taxes, current taxes between Meere and the current quarry are approximately $600,000. So, in discussions, the concept was, well, the minute, the minute, the reason the value on Meere is because of the zoning. And the minute we subdivided that piece, and someone said it earlier on the record, multiple meetings, that tax value will go down. And we were, our goal is in discussions is to make sure we don't lose tax revenue. So, one way to do that would be to look at the concept of increasing their permit license fee in lieu of the reduction you'll see on a subdivision.
Well, that's not what the email said. The email said that because you did not want people complaining about a pilot program, taking money from the county and the Board of Ed.
Right. So, in lieu of...
That's not what you just said.
But it would, no, it's to offset the loss of tax. Whether I do a pilot or I do it as a permit fee, either way, it's not losing the borough money. Whatever you want to call it. But we're not going to do a pilot if we were to move forward.
Which is not what you also said in another email. Another question I have is, doesn't the public, open public meeting act prohibit it from sending emails to all council members?
I believe, as long as we're not discussing back and forth, I believe, you know, if we, like, I'll send out an email saying, hey, here's something, and then, you know, council, we won't engage in conversation as a quorum. But...
It's not a, it's not a back and forth. It's a dissemination of information.
That's not what's been going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mrs. DeLejour?
Just wanted to say, I don't know that taxes have ever gone down.
No, they haven't.
And that's why I don't think they ever will.
Sad, but true. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no one. Did we even have a motion to open this, I don't believe? Did we?
No, it was a presentation.
It was a presentation. Okay. So, there's no motion to close. Ross, I thank you for being here. I asked you to give me that PDF so I could post it on the website. And Paul, to you as well, thank you for being here past your bedtime.
See you in the morning.
See you at 9:00 AM for our winter road tour. Good. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. I'll let Ross clean up a little bit.
You want to take another recess?
You know what? Yeah. Because I'm not going to go. Everyone's moving. So, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
There she goes, a ferret.
We will resume at 10:30 PM. First item is early executive session. Need a motion for early executive, I mean, early public discussion. I'm sorry. Wait a minute. Where am I going here? Oh, no. There's no early executive session. Non-agenda. There's three non-agenda items. What? One is accepting a resignation from the senior advisory committee and then adding a person to there. The third will be, I will ask for a motion to refer Tilcon to the planning board for review of the reports to date, you know, master plan, et cetera, and then they can get back to us with anything they want to suggest going forward to get that started and public more opportunity. And also, there'll be an introduction by title of an ordinance for, we have a drug zone ordinance, but it doesn't have a school zone piece for DUI. So, we're going to be amending the ordinance to add a school zone to our drug zone ordinance for enforcement of DUIs within school zones. Okay. So, that's that. I need a motion to early public comment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item, please come on up. State your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, motion to close.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any reports? Jane, anything for us?
Nothing at this time.
Any councilperson?
Budget Committee met, and we're well underway, and, you know, we should be able to, I don't know, date on it.
Well, I should introduce in April.
April, May.
Yeah.
Time frame.
You should introduce in April. Good. Thank you.
Well underway.
Yep. But, you know, revenues are down, expenses are up.
Well, just, just, just the winter. Last winter, we spent an extra $140,000 between overtime and everything. This year was another $100,000 above and beyond that. It's ridiculous how much it's costing us. So, I'm waiting for a good year before we can use that money to offset some of the other expenses going up. And then, you know, all the other, the usual suspects, right? The insurance and pensions going up.
Right.
Same as usual, so.
Right. And the snow, we're $25,336 more on salt over last year, and $24,893,94 more on overtime.
Does that include this past weekends?
No. It is not.
It's not because of the cold. We've had a little bit of really the snow.
We've actually had, we've had 54 inches, not counting the last snowfall.
Well, no, there's also the problem that a lot of it's been on the weekends.
Which is 10 inches less than the prior year.
Over time.
We had 64.5 in '14 and 56 inches in '15, but our costs are up over $50,000. So...
Over $50,000.
Interesting stuff. So, do you have anything for us this evening?
No, Mayor.
Good answer. Moving along. I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. And just please note, thanking membership Nick Zinstra and Kevin Zakovsky to the fire department, and also Tribe of Little League Parade Memorial Day Road Closure Authorization. And the resignation from Ken Fioretti is from the economic development, not recreation, just due to work commitments. He's on the planning board, but can't do both. Okay. So, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pending business. Second and final reading, public hearing on ordinance 6, 2015, amending Chapter 2, Article 8, Policies and Procedures. Public notice statement, please.
Mayor, this ordinance was posted in municipal bill, being published in the Herald News, copies available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by time.
And who makes that motion?
Second.
Please. I'm sorry. Oh, roll call?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the borough of Bloomingdale, the county of Passaic, and state of New Jersey to amend Chapter 2 Administration, Articles 8, Policy and Procedures, Section 2-82, competitive bidding of professional services of the code of the borough of Bloomingdale.
What we are simply doing here is we've always had a policy in place on insurance requirements for vendors, professionals, et cetera, but we're just memorializing it by ordinance with specific terms for general liability coverages, workers comp, et cetera. So, that's what we're doing. I need a motion to open public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any public wishing to speak to 6, 2015? Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers Demoto, Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Son de Mar.
Yes.
Yasdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Okay, new business. I need a motion to dot resolution 2015 3.8, payment of the bills. Who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
I need discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Son de Mar.
Yes.
Yasdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Item C. I need a motion for 2015 3.15. This is a resolution congratulating our bond council, Jack Craft, on his lifetime achievement award from the New Jersey Law Journal. Who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion other than the man wrote the book and proud to have him as our bond council and congratulate him on this achievement? And I would like a roll call, please.
Councilmember Son de Mar.
Yes.
Yasdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Yes.
I need a motion for resolution 2015 3.16, authorizing uncash refunds for municipal court. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yasdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Need a motion for 2015 3.17, changing monetary amount of petty cash fund for the Bloomingdale Public Library from $100 to $200. Who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa.
Yes.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hudson. Yes. Son Demare.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hudson. Yes. Son Demare.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hudson. Yes. Son Demare.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hudson. Yes. Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Son Demare.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Son Demare.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson. And as you can see from the resolutions, the cost for our free donation of land is now $10,000, $9,900. The reason I don't want to take action on it, I reached out to our joint insurance fund, and there's a service they offer at no charge to do an initial assessment and make recommendations on what future assessment we should look at doing, and it may not have to be as comprehensive as what's here. They do title history, search use of the property, et cetera. And if they come back and say that based on what our insurance company sees, we may be able to do a phase one only, which is probably about half this cost. And I'll bring that back to you once I hear back from our joint insurance fund on that assessment. And I've told the Passaic River Coalition of our -- how we're going to proceed on this. And so we're fine on time. Okay? So. Item H. This is -- I'm sorry?
Okay.
Item H. This is a introduction by title of ordinance number -- what are we at, Jane?
Seven, 2015.
Seven, 2015. A utility bond ordinance for Star Lake Road and Ryerson Ave. Again, we're introducing you by title. Remember, this -- we have Star Lake funding in place for the paving curbs and stormwater from a DOT grant, but after meetings with our utility department, I'm confident, I'm hoping the borough will move on the full water line replacement on all of Star Lake, approximately $1 million. And again, I'm hoping it will be less, and when it's less, we'll cancel the difference. This is a main fee to our tank. It supplies and provides water from our main tank, and we've had, you know, seven or so breaks in the past number of years. So this would be full line replacement, laterals, curb boxes, et cetera. Also in this, we received $145,000 community development block grant for Ryerson, and we -- the total cost is $300,000, so we'll be bonding the full amount to do full sewer line replacement, excuse me, full water line replacement, laterals, curb boxes, curbs, sidewalks, and road paving of Ryerson. Also in this bond is $30,000 for GIS mapping. As you know, we spent almost $200,000 a few years ago for our utility mapping. This GIS allows, in the field, our department, when they make corrections, to update immediately the corrections to the mapping via this GIS mapping component. And then money in here for the leak study. I want to move forward because, as we all know, we're losing a bit of water. You know, we buy X amount of water, but we're not billing as much. There's a loss, and we want to discover that and hopefully make an improvement there. So I need a motion to introduce by title.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
The -- this is 1.5 million now?
The total is $1 million on Star Lake, $300,000. It's all on $300,000 and change on Ryerson, 30 on GIS mapping, 30 on inventory, and 10 on the leak study. This is the proposal we received for leak study. Correct. And I would -- I'm confident that the number on Star Lake will be lower, but you don't want to bond twice, and this is including all our miscellaneous. And I would, you know, suggest, once the bids come in, the governing body cancels. I know that's always a concern for the governing body, leaving open balances, and you can't do it by ordinance, but you could do it by resolution to cancel debt in the future.
There was two numbers on the bond that I seen. One was for 1.3, a little bit over, and one was for 1.5. Is the 1.3 the revenue bond portion that you're going to return, or I didn't get that?
Nothing. Until you bid things, you're not going to be able to cancel any debt. The difference was the adding the --
Studies.
Well, the studies and total cost on Ryerson for a full build-out on Ryerson Ave.
So is it 1.3?
1.5, 31645 is the bond.
Is the total.
Did we have -- I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The water lines on Ryerson will also be?
Water lines, laterals, curb boxes, curbs, paving, and sidewalks on Ryerson. Full boat. That road will be off our list.
And on Star Lake, it's two lines. It's a 12-inch and a 6-inch or 8-inch line that goes up. And the breaks were on the 8-inch line, according to the water guys. They said it was only one break on the 12-inch. My question is, if we're spending $1 million, don't you think it behooves us to dig up a couple of sections to take a look at the piping? We were going to replace all the laterals and all the inlets on Rathkeine, and we found out after they started digging it, they were actually pretty darn good, the pipes that were in the ground.
And over about 10 years, it's been about $71,000 that we spent on breaks, too. That's a lot less than bonding out.
Sure. That's also what I would call putting a Band-Aid on things. It's not going to get better. But again, to your point, you still need the funding in place to do anything. So if that's your recommendation, when the funding is in place, which is going to be another 40-plus days from today, because you adopt, and then you need 20 days for funding, you know, we can speak -- Mike, you can speak. I'll do it for you, to the engineer, about doing some pit tests before we do a full-blown bid on it.
I guess my question then, too, would be to the water department, on these breaks that we go on, are they taking pictures of the breaks and the pipes on the ground once we had the road opened up as they're doing a fix?
Right. I don't think they were in the past, but the GIS mapping will be -- it gives them a tough pad to document the break, to repair, and update our mapping going forward, which hasn't existed. So I'd ask you to move forward, and then, you know, we can have that line tested before we proceed and cancel debt if you decide to not move forward.
The biggest concern I have is that's the main feed to the water tank.
Right.
And that's also your main feed to your fire protection compared to a Rathkeen Road deal. Know what I'm saying?
It's a feed to the tank. There's another feed. Everything feeds to the tank. Even though there's another 12-inch that comes off a red twig trail as well.
Right.
It's a feed to the tank as well.
Right.
But it's -- yeah. So. My question, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, but they won't know that until you open up the road and look at it.
And you know, being that we're going to bid Star Lake paving, curbing, and storm drain, and bid this portion as an alternate to that bid, we need to get the funding in place if we move forward. And if not, the governing body can just cancel it. You do not want to not move this evening and have to reauthorize a bond ordinance at a later date. It'll cost you more money. Okay. So did we -- I'm sorry. Did we have a motion for introduction?
And this is the introduction.
We were just in the discussion part. So what do we have there?
Motion second.
Do you want a roll call?
Yes. And that's the second and final.
Second and final, April 21st, 7:00 p.m. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
No.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa. No.
DeMato.
Yes. Thank you. Moving along, I need a motion to adopt Resolution 2015 3.19.
Yes.
Approval of water billing collections agreement with Butler. They've been doing our billing for sewer and water. This is just memorializing because the contract had expired. It includes a 2% increase. I need a motion to approve this contract by resolution.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
This is my resolution. That's one. Did you stumble in my resolution? Okay. I need a motion to approve the entertainment license as is for Stumble-In. It is in order to do so. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item K. Adoption Resolution 2015 3.20, approval of Rose Fund report. Rose Fund had their two public meetings. They -- I was able to attend one. I believe Councilman Sondemar attended both. Due to the late hour, knowing we would be late, you know, I asked them to submit me the report, which you all are copied on, for us to adopt. And if the governing body wishes to have them in, we can have them in at an April meeting. But this will allow the town to proceed with some of the, you know, spring projects that are normal. It's pretty much a same thing every year as far as maintenance items go. The splits are recommended the same as they were last year. 30% rec, 30% maintenance, 30% discretionary, 10% open space. They're just saying that identifying the DeLasure Grandstand project, which we will not have to tap funds from here for. They talked about a concept of looking at a -- in lieu of renting a storefront for rec center, look at, you know, building one. Again, it's all about money, so that's just a discussion point at this time. But pretty much the recommendations are the same, that they've been -- even the capital item of a scoreboard's been there for a couple of years, there's just been no funding to do so. They recommend the idea of a dog park. So just things as -- but as far as DPW tasks, non-DPW tasks are all pretty much the same. Authorizing our $2,000 for the senior center programs. And one thing we would go to if we do acquire the land from Passaic River would be those studies from the Rose Fund at a later date. I do know an amendment to this would be the addition of a storage trailer at Walter T. Bergen.
Got a question on that.
Yeah. Before you do, and then a couple of new things. We'd like to get -- and I sent the councilman Costa, there's a grant for trails, so we're inquiring whether we can apply to the DEP for a trail grant for Dragonfly Meadows, although we're not the owner. I think we can, because the borough had received grants on Norvind Green without owning it, so.
It is in the grant text that you -- the owner does -- you not have to own the land.
Okay. So that's what we're exploring there.
It's in the text, but I want verification.
Right. This would be a grant for just identifying, marking trails on that parcel. So again, all the items that pretty much are repetitive. And Councilman, I'm sorry, you had a question on what?
The storage trailer?
Yes.
The -- what's the purpose of that?
It was a recommendation from Councilman Yasty, I believe, for general storage, including soccer storage, and the shed that accommodates the tractor and all the drag screens for the baseball fields is kind of at its max, so it's just for more storage for multipurpose. Because the restrooms really don't have big storage area. It's a small closet.
The -- I know the Rec Commission looking for a trailer out back, and they got shot down because of the trailer they wanted to get, which is the same type of trailer we're going to put up there, I believe, a seagoing cargo container, was going to be an eyesore behind the rec building. And I know when I go into establishments here in Bloomingdale, people talk about the trailers at DeLasure that are eyesores, and they were told they were supposed to go away. One was definitely temporary. So why are we deciding to put another eyesore on another park or school ground in this town if people are complaining about it?
Well, the intention -- I'll speak to that. The intention is, I can't speak to DeLasure as far as whoever said they were short-term. I mean, I'm here 20 years, and they've been there 20 years. But my intention is to have DPW beautify them with T-111, give a roofline to them to make them look more shed-like than metal boxes. The Rec Commission was not shot down on anything. The Rec Commission wanted to buy a metal trailer, and when it came to me, I suggested they look at a shed for that reason, because we have just cited the owner of the property for four trailers backed by Lina's, and I felt it was inappropriate for us to put one for rec storage for something we're citing that is not permissible with the site plan approval. And they're not just the trailers, they're actually tractor-trailer rigs in the back there. So Rec was not shot down. There was the same cost for them to do the shed.
Actually, it was $1,000 more. They had their meeting last night.
Well, not according to the numbers I saw, but regardless, they didn't encumber it and do the purchase order timely before they closed out on 2014.
And they -- well, we can get into that another time, but.
I'm sorry?
We can get into that another time also.
But again, I -- that's, you know, on the --
We're going to go through all that.
On the director's part, not mine, you know, so.
That's not what I'm being told, but.
Okay. Well, you tell me what you're being told.
We're going to go through all that trouble of getting a storage trailer, and then we're going to cover it with wood. Why don't we just buy a prefabbed?
Because for the size needed, it was.
What do we store it -- what does soccer need to store?
Well, if soccer needs to store something, why is soccer not buying it?
Listen, I looked into it, and the cost of, you know, same-size storage as a shed. And by the way, the shed is just T-111, and it's going to rot within five to 10 years, right? And the metal one's going to rot, too? Just like. It's metal, and it's going to last probably.
It'll last a lot longer.
Thirty years, but, you know, and painted by them. It's guaranteed it's never going to leak and all of that. It's about half the cost for food containment.
Again, you're not voting on buying it. You're voting on -- it's a recommendation in the Rose Fund. It's not in this. I'm adding it because I know that was discussed last fall. And again.
Well, I have no problem adding it, but before we buy it, I'd rather come back to the council to discuss.
That's fine. I assure you of that. What we're doing is adopting recommendations.
Yep.
Any further discussion? And do we have a motion on that? I apologize. Kind of getting giddy here.
Yeah.
So I need a motion to accept the Rose Report as submitted. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? A second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sondemar.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Okay. Next item is community garden. Any discussion if in order to do so? I believe Councilman Costa put that on the agenda?
Yes. The BEC has been looking at several locations for a community garden. One of the locations they found, and they talked to the school, the principal of the school, and someone else, I don't remember the actual title he had, but anyway, he had no objections to -- for our location, our thought of location, which was right behind the tennis courts. It's about a 50-foot wide by 146-foot length.
The walking track.
Is going around there?
Mm-hmm. It's been for years.
Can it go around the garden?
Can the garden go within the walking track, do you mean? I'm sorry.
We have somewhat of a committee set up for a community garden already, so maybe we can combine?
I mentioned that before, that we could.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, because we're kind of separate people working in two separate directions.
I meant.
We should definitely.
I definitely mentioned that before, Dawn.
Well, I think, listen, listen, listen. The two of you should get together, discuss how you want to proceed, and then bring it to the governing body. I don't think anyone would object. You really -- you don't have a water source at Walter T.
Behind -- actually, you do.
A water source?
Yes.
You'd have to add one.
Well, you could use funds for that. I'm sure there's funds that we could use to.
Well, right. We'd have to get estimates.
Grants.
There's a county grant, the most $1,500 for design.
And there's water right in the cul-de-sac there.
Well, I'm saying, you'd have to run a line from the cul-de-sac, water line to it. Yeah, no, it's not out of the question, but.
It's cleared land.
It's fine. I would suggest, but again, the track is going in that vicinity, so I don't think you have 50 by 100 feet.
Have to look at.
I don't think you have 50 by 100 feet. My other concern with that location is.
What?
Guys, you can -- the two of you bring something back. My concern, again, that size will not fit within the track. My concern, though, is the location with sports and kids in school, that it will not be very well protected. So that's my concern with that location.
You fence it in.
Have to fence it in.
And Montville does it. They have times, time parents, where they go on a school grounds, and they say during school hours, you cannot do anything with the garden. But that's so far out of the school property's way.
Well, it's in the borough lease, so we're okay with it. So, again.
Yeah. Bless me.
Have that discussion and bring it back. We got to get pricing and the like. But I know, Dawn, I gave you grant information, but it wasn't a -- it was like a $1,500 design grant for community gardens from the county, so.
Yeah.
Okay. I need a motion for 2015 3.21, transfer 2014 resolutions going to streets and roads. Who makes that motion?
So moved. No second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
I need a motion, Resolution 2015 3.22, cancellation of reserved items. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
As you can see, Mayor and Council Borough of Bloomingdale authorized cancellation of various reserve funds. Borough has determined that the following have been canceled or deferred at this time, and that was a reserve fund for revaluation and $275 for Hurricane Sandy, just, you know, get it off the books. And who -- any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers -- sorry. Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
I need a motion to authorize partial payment to TG-1 LLC, an amount of $15,000 for renovations to 182 Union Ave. We renovated the Union Ave building for our construction office, which should be completed in the next 10 days to 14 days, and hopefully occupied by April 15th. We're making a partial payment of half the contract amount. More than 80% of the work has been completed. Who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers DeMato.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the new planning board checklist for applications for residential. They have developed a new checklist to make it more user-friendly, and that it is. Who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Other than I thank the planning board for doing this. We want to be user-friendly when homeowners come for any bulk variance residential, and it is much more simplified process. So thank you, and roll call, please.
Councilmembers Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
I need a motion for Resolution 2015 3.23. This is a resolution for acknowledging clicket or ticket May 18 through May 31st. It's been selected as national clicket or ticket mobilization enforcement period. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We had three non-agenda items. The first being, I need a motion to accept the resignation of Doris Migliarino, who has moved out of town, out of state, from the senior advisory. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, other than thanking Doris for her service, and all in favor?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to add Jackie Blacksmith to the senior advisory commission. Who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Other than to thank her for serving? And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I need a motion. I would like to refer the Tealcon Mirror Conceptual Plan to the planning board for their review of all the information to date and review it along with, you know, the master plan, and make any recommendation to the governing body as they see fit based on what we have to date. Who makes that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think we should, with the magnitude of that decision, I think with the decision before us, I think we should move to -- and the presentations, with everything we heard from the PRC and the town engineer, I suggest we table that to next meeting so we can digest some of the things that were said.
But all we're doing, all we're doing is send it to the planning board so they can have their looksee. There's nothing, nothing. And then it comes back to us with a recommendation. They can come back and say, hey, you know, we would like to see concrete boundaries here. We want to see this. Again, we have to get them engaged at some point, so we're not committing anywhere, anybody, anything. We're just referring to them for their review, and that's it. So if you're concerned about, there's a lot more to digest on our half, too. We, right, we need to digest items, too. So all we're doing, and I'd ask you to move this to the planning board for their -- so they could have a looksee as well, because we don't have impact or any input from them since the reexamination, which was quite some time ago. So do I have someone to make that motion? We're not committing anything further than we already have moved on this to date, so.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
No.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
No.
DeMato.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Okay. The final item was an introduction by title for ordinance, and I apologize, Jane.
Eight, 2015.
Eighteen, 2015. This, again, is amending our current drug-free zone maps to acknowledge the school zone and implementing the wording, the map now depicting school zones may be used in prosecution while driving while intoxicated, not just the drug component. And who makes that motion introduced by title?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? And second and final reading on April 21st, 7:00 p.m. And Madam Cork. I'm sorry. Roll call.
Councilmember Sondemar.
Yes.
Yasty.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
And Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
The ordinance of the borough of Bloomingdale and the county of Passaic State, New Jersey, to amend Chapter 3 Police Regulations, Section 3-11, drug-free zone maps of the borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay. Thank you. Now I need a motion to open late public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Into Shortman Two, West Shore Road, Acampi Lake. I just want an explanation of why all of the video. I keep hearing there's a problem, but there hasn't been a video all year.
Right. I'll let Rich address it. There's audio on every meeting, but we have had two fronts.
Well, there is at least one meeting, I believe, the whatever the second meeting in January was. We've had a series of problems. I know last time, it's hard to explain without getting technical, but basically, last time the cameras reset, and we couldn't talk to them in the last meeting, so there's no video for that one. I've had problems with, and actually, I'm watching it right now to make sure. There's been some problems with actually getting the recordings. I've added, I've been trying to fix them as much as I can for the ones that we actually have something valid for. But what I've done, I don't know if you've noticed, the agenda looks a little different. I think we overloaded the laptop that's doing the recording by trying to do too much. You know, I had multiple windows up. We had the agenda running off of it as well, so I'm trying to simplify it as much as possible because I think the laptop was getting overloaded trying to do too much at once. So at this point in time, you know, knock on wood, which I know this isn't, it looks like this meeting has worked successfully.
So you have your iPad, which is running the TV.
Right.
Not one unit now, and it seems to be working.
Certainly not, for lack of trying.
But there is audio.
I was wondering.
But on Channel 77?
Had to hire somebody to do it.
Channel 77, that's their end.
Right. There's a whole nother -- she's asking about the website.
Right.
For Channel 77, their equipment has actually failed, and they need to -- Butler has to purchase replacements or something like that, and that's why, because I've had a couple of people ask why, you know, there aren't any videos showing on Channel 77. That's an equipment problem with Butler.
I find that very inconvenient. I think the website's much better.
I know. But for the website, what happened was, I had a problem, especially with, quite honestly, I got stuck trying to fix, I keep wanting to say the second meeting, actually, no, it is the second meeting. The second meeting in November, I had an audio problem with, and I finally got a copy from Jane and spliced that in. So now we're pretty much caught up to, like I said, the end of January, at least as much as I can do. So I'm trying to do as much as possible as I can.
Well, I think you're really doing a great job, but maybe you need professional people to do it?
That would be wonderful. Matter of fact, I had Jane reach out and do a survey of all the towns in Morris County and Passaic County, and overwhelmingly, the response has been most don't do it. We want to continue to do it. The response we got from two towns who sub it out are spending $5,500 a year to sub out the service. I just, you know, it's all about the money, right? I just can't.
Right. And if we don't come up with a solution, I mean, we'll have, I mean, because, you know, our IT support people put this in and stuff like that.
There was one town that was paying a college student $65 a meeting to do it. So an avenue we can explore, but we went to the ceiling cameras, which, again, I think it was an overload issue in the laptop, hopefully it's resolved.
Oh.
But I don't have a problem spending six grand subbing it out.
Well, thanks for trying. I miss it.
The tripod with Rich's personal camera was working the best, but hopefully we're over that.
That's what I thought.
I know. But, you know, when Rich wasn't here, we didn't do it, you know?
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
It is a, yeah, I mean, I identify it as a problem. I've been trying as hard as I can, but hopefully this has gotten us somewhere positive.
Anyone else, please? See no motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We, governing body's schedule. We have work session April 7th, regular meeting April 21st. We do have four attorney-client privilege items and two negotiation items in executive session. I don't contemplate any action, but the public will have an opportunity to speak if so. I need a motion to go into executive session at 11:08 p.m.
So moved.